Welcome, we'll call our June 8 continuation meeting to order. Again, I'd like to welcome all of you here. It's great tonight, it gives me a lot of very, very familiar faces that are all duly concerned in Macon County and Macon County government. As all of y'all know, the gist of tonight's meeting has to do with budget and budget discussions. Odds are very good, I've been on this board long enough to know that odds are very good, that those departments that were happy with county manager's budget were votable. Boy, they thought they'd probably give too much money, they're probably not here tonight. Those that aren't are here to speak with us and the board understand what's going on. Taxes and budget are, in my opinion, the most important thing that this board is elected to do, is to oversee our county tax dollars. It's something that, again, we take very, very seriously. If you look back through history, our nation's history, what's there with me today? Look back through our nation's history, there's probably nothing that's caused more strife, wars, and issues than the term taxes and budgets. And so, with that being said, I know we're gonna have some very serious discussions tonight, so I expect everyone in this room to work through what I call civil discourse, which in simpler terms just means, let's just have good, respectful, honest conversations about where we're headed tonight. With that being said, is there any additions to the agenda? I have one item I'd like to add. Anybody else? I'd like to add maybe, let's add this item number, well, we'll just add it under number four before eight, will be Health Department. I'm concerned the Health Department had possible additions to the budget.
True, I would like to add one item, I don't know where you want places, but I'd like to go by it, the college community, Southwestern community college, current budget here, potentially a small shortfall.
You think I'm supposed to not have that in the bill? Right. They need to have that coming up. So, did you think I was supposed to have sixty libraries on? We'll add libraries as core B. Anything else, I don't think we have a public comment here. Is anyone else concerned on our agenda, if our department, Board of Education, Health Department, libraries, make sure I make your area on that agenda. If anybody else is missing, anything else? With that being said, we'll move on to item number two. I guess we're in the approval, Chair. Just in the middle of the agenda.
Much to approve, in his opinion, Chair.
Question second, all the vagabonds. Budget discussion regarding Macon County schools. Well, I've got a lot of them. I think this board, we have received our county manager's proposal, and I think we're all familiar and understand it very well. We're all familiar with what your initial budget was, and I understand there's been some discussions going on with liaisons. With that being said, I think there's still some, it sounds like some discontent maybe of where we need to go without it. So, now those discussions, that's where we need to be. Thank you, welcome, Mark Martin.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to be here before we even met. Just some information for you tonight to consider, as you discussed, county manager's proposed budget. I'd like to start with some information about the comparison of Macon County schools budget with other budgets. First, again, with Macon County budgets compared to the two budgets from 2008 to '09 through 2017. You can see, the Macon County budget is on the right-hand side, and the Macon County school budget is on the right-hand side, and the county budget is on the left-hand side. This information, bulk of the information I collected from the Moctown Association and County Commissioner's website, budget, current, and tax survey data. And then, the far right column, local employees, I pulled that out of the Moctown Department of Public Construction website, this is the total local personnel. Couple of things just to point out, you'll notice that the total budget, thirteen million, four hundred thirty-five thousand, total nine, total eight hundred nine, has gone down to eleven seven five eight six fifty-one. That includes debt service and other items like that, which they include in that list inclusion, items in there that I don't really have a lot of knowledge about.
Do you think that way or nine numbers? I'll have to see where the number came from. Lori and I were putting some numbers together today, and just doing FY '17, '18 budget, and looking back at FY '16, '17, and it just depends on which number to use. That number could be eleven-nine, or twelve-four, I think we had a number of it as twelve-three, just depending on what's included in the table.
Sure. And certainly, we'll make that clear, again, this came off from the Moctown County Commissioner's website, and I don't know how that data is collected, I know that we got some discrepancy sometime with the data that NCAI had, but for comparison's sake, this is what we have. I've noticed, or I noted an asterisk on year thirteen fourteen, local employees of one-hundred-and-thirty-nine. That was, a couple of items about that particular data. That's the same number of local employees that we had in 2006. And at that time, was what did the financial stimulus money that we had, so that does have an impact on that half number of local paid employees at that time. Now, if you go down to sixteen seventy, you'll notice that we only have one-hundred-and-fourteen now, and that's a change of twenty-five employees. And obviously, that, a change of that number of employees, and the operational budget is staying pretty much the same, allows you to increase fund balance. And one thing about that is, back in thirteen fourteen, we had a very minimal fund balance and change in, like fiscal year, of about seven hundred thousand dollars in the negative. So, we were in a position where we, our auditors were being pretty stern with us, and we needed to build a fund balance. I know that there's some questions about where the fund balance came from, and how we generated that number of change in local employees, is the bulk of the reason why we're increasing fund balance. Notice that from 2008, 2007, from the total budget, changed by about twelve percent. This is another.
One question. The full-time, the full-time employees, that four forty-four is the full-time equivalent. If you look at our full-time employees, that's including part-time employees as well. If you look at our full-time employees, that's approximately three-eighty. And I know that if you looked at our audits, if these number of employees, our past audits, maybe the full-time equivalents, which employees are part-time employees.
The NCACC survey, we all talk about the full-time employees.
So, is that what we're doing?
About, plus, here it's at four forty-four, minus three-eighty-five, you're gonna be looking at a difference of about sixteen.
Has it been changed in the way that we record, or is that?
I can't attest.
They're recording full-time equivalent, which includes part-time.
I don't know what they're gonna know, but fourteen through seventeen, full-time equivalents.
And then, I understand that that happens early, so. Does that fit that whole budget?
Another way to look at it is, of course, looking at current expense. And you'll notice that in fourteen fifteen, current expense budget was seven three three-eight, fifteen sixteen, seven three three-eight, and also in thirteen fourteen, it was seven three three-eight. And sixteen seventeen, it got changed to seven one three eight three thirty, and we were instructed to use fund balance at that time to keep our operating budget at seven three three-eight. The supplement has changed over the years, and I also need to point out, in seventeen eighteen, that four hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars, that's changed already, with what's been proposed by the Senate and the House. Obviously, the Senate's budget has proposed, or has been changed from the budget that we're working off at that time. If the Senate budget is approved, or if the compromise budget is closer to the Senate's budget, that number may actually go up. If the compromise is closer to the House budget, it will go down. Capital outlay for this year is six hundred thousand, the solvency is fifty thousand. And I have the, of that, debt service, what was reported by the civil finance special commission, is the total debt service which back up that school reserve fund, the large one, I'm thinking that's.
That's just the general things, right?
So, overall budget of nine point six, compared to the budget of nine point six sixteen and fourteen fifteen. A lot of what it's changed there. This comparison of the same information from the Moctown Association and County Commissioner's website, or I think what's been described in the pice is our sister counties, West Moctown. You will see that the Macon County, of the four counties, has the largest A unit. And there's a pretty significant difference in the total budgets, and also the operating budgets. There's a little difference in the way that the operating budgets are recorded for the four counties, primarily being, Macon County's teacher supplement is not included in the operational budget, whereas in Pennsylvania, in the target county, it is included in the operational budget. I'm not sure what the target county's teacher supplement is, but in Pennsylvania, county's nine point five percent, that's not for teachers, that's for our employees, my understanding. And that's included in the operational budget, that's obviously a huge chunk of the operational budget. Other, other big items in both Pennsylvania or target budgets are for technology. The milk rate is also included again, as is fund balance for fiscal year fifteen sixteen, for the four counties. Also decided to include comparison of some of the performance indicators, which you can also, this can be found on the Moctown Department of Public Construction website and the school community. One category, two years, the ACT score. Out in Macon County, only about eighty-two point nine percent of students participate in the ACT, compared to varying percentages across the other four counties, other three counties. Pennsylvania County did test a hundred percent of their students, so you have to take that into account when you're comparing those schools. Work keys is a test that's given to our students for vocational type courses. And you see that we compare favorably in all of those areas despite considerable difference in the budget. And I would just like to emphasize the fact that, I know there's been only one reason for us to be able to compete the way that we are with these other counties, considering the difference in our operational budget, and that's because of our teachers and our principals. They care about Macon County, they care about our students, and they weren't part of the say that we achieved, our schools achieved, compared to those across the state. Kudos, I truly appreciate that. This was our draft budget that we submitted. Two columns, far left column is our request, far right column is the, if the proposed budget is approved. Under, and this was based on the best information that we had at the time of the draft budget. And it has since changed, I'll get to some of those changes. But we budgeted one point two million dollars of fund balance, and that being, if everything went to the positive, so words, we didn't have to spend three hundred and ten thousand dollars on the six positions that we needed to address the class side mandate. If we received the federal funding for Title II, and we didn't have to move committee coordinators around, and we did not hire a digital learning specialist, and we didn't have to move for a teacher's job, and it doesn't look like we're gonna have to move for a teacher's job, and we're about to launch that pilot. The minimum fund balance appropriated under these two budgets would be four hundred eighty-three thousand dollars, which is. Now, since the draft budget was submitted, the Senate budget has been proposed, as has the House budget. If the Senate's budget is passed, our minimum fund balance appropriated will increase eight-hundred-seventy-three thousand dollars. I know that that is a little bit of a surprise, or to the confusion, because of the fact that the class side mandate was taken out of the Senate budget, but what was included in the Senate budget were several flexible, several waivers that limited our flexibility in moving money away. And that resulted in the dividend is showing the change in fund balance appropriated. If the Senate budget's passed, we'll have to appropriate somewhere between eight hundred seventy-three thousand and one point three million for our fund balance. If we, if our budget is kept, seven three three-eight, we'll have to appropriate one point three million. The House budget is much more favorable. If the House budget is passed, at our request, we'll have to fund one hundred ninety-nine thousand out of fund balance. And if, if the manager's proposal is approved, we'll have to appropriate almost four hundred thousand. Now, obviously, there'll be a compromise between the House and Senate, so it's gonna be somewhere between requirement of us appropriating almost two hundred thousand and possibly one point three million, somewhere in that, in that neighborhood. I know that, when we've had our discussions in the pice, it's come up that the county's responsibility is bricks and mortar, and state's responsibility is operational. And I'll just point out that an article that's found on the Moctown Association and County Commissioner's website, county funding of public schools, under the heading, county funding of public schools. The title of the article is stated by the Moctown Association and County Commissioners Committee for the State of Public Finance. Counties have been supplementing the state's appropriation of current expense since nineteen thirty-three. In nineteen fifty-eight, that amount of appropriation, or amount of supplementation, had gone up to about seventeen percent of school system's total operational budget. In other words, the county funded at least seventy percent. Counties across Moctown funded seventy percent of school system's operational budgets at that time. In two thousand and sixteen, that has increased, but not, I don't think as much as you'd think since nineteen fifty-eight. It's only gone up from seventeen percent to four one point four percent. I don't dispute the fact that states should be furnishing a full amount of operational expenditure, but the fact is, most counties across the state, including our own, they say they're doing it on. Today, Macon County, Macon County funds about sixteen point nine percent of the overall school system's operational experience. I say all that, in hopes that you will consider maintaining our operational budget at seven three three eight thousand dollars. Seven three three eight thousand dollars. That's our operational budget request, our capital outlay budget request, should have seen this spreadsheet you have, you have this written. Do you have any questions about the capital outlay budget request? The county manager has recommended appropriation six hundred thousand dollars from Capitola.
We don't have that.
Well, obviously, it's more than we had last year. We certainly appreciate that.
Big since technology.
At this point, the capital outlay request reflected six classrooms, along with the cafeteria expansion of approximately one point six million dollars. Right now, Southmacon is at capacity, and when I say capacity, I mean, we're using media centers, we're using storage rooms, and things like that for structural purposes. If enrollment continues to increase next year, we're gonna be in some hot water, beginning with our school rate. Right now, it looks like we will be at capacity, and again, when I say at capacity, I mean, slightly above capacity. We'll be able to operate, we believe so at this point, but if we have an enrollment increase over the summer, we maybe have to boost the bulk of it.
Our conversation's been very, very, we talked about doing something that, I mean, talk this plan, okay? We've got a picture of it here. I think what we're referring to, or Mr. Chairman, is we'll break this before the board later on, when the manager, when he has a chance to sit in the top of it, is to go ahead and do preliminary, floor expansion, ask Southmacon. Lori and I, we're shooting for talking, and the manager, I think we're in a, right, period covered up, go ahead and have a plan prepared, get everything ready for the, it seems imminent, we're gonna have to be in expansion, it certainly appears so, we should be here, so just go ahead and prepare and have at least, as we know that that takes a, still takes a good chunk of time, to go ahead and at least have plans ready, to show the ready to hurt that equation.
Yeah, it sounds like this might even come, might even more price than even even waiting on our capital.
We would, we would encourage that, processes we move along, we could have a discussion further along, not tonight, but we, and I think the scrutiny would encourage that also. The pressure about the rezon communities, the scrutiny would have to take the first step if we're moving tonight.
Maybe something, I think that's our position, we would, I think, if we don't start putting something in that sense.
What would, what would the timeline look like at this point?
It'll be up and forward, because Philo, who's one of the things, he's always wanted to do, Jones would do that, that's a little gray, and somebody, it seemed right, like Philo was talking about what age somebody's getting, they must get to ten years old, or four years old. So, there's some, there's some motivation work, we probably tie in to the same thing that we usually bring back to the board, Jones would, and we, we put that all together. But there are still a lot, we don't wanna get behind, like, some of us sitting here are sitting behind the screen, but we need to do that now. With the timeline, we, I would, what we're talking about, particularly, is that, that was hoping.
Well, what we've put in the capital outlay request is six tables, and that's roughly, it gives us a two-class recognition, based on what we have at the end of the year this year. Obviously, that made change, oh, yeah.
If we ever did a school that we hired for expansion, we departed those in use, we did, it was spaces we had, Southmacon deserved more of it, so. But we get, the situation, as this school seems to be, we're real worried, we should get out, hours of it, we do, we do, we do.
Just a few comments, and, you know, at this time of year, it seems like, you know, every year, the uncertainty that accompanies the passage of the state budget leaves us kind of in a state of limbo with respect to local level, but of course, when that state budget's passed, we don't know the impact that'll have on local level, but you did have a slide with the, that showed, I think it was about fourteen fifteen, and the county allocations. Right there, right. In fourteen, and you know, I say that to say that this is not, you know, this is not something new at this budget discussion, we're not facing every year with the state budget. For instance, in fiscal year fourteen fifteen, the school system originally requested seven point eight million in operating funds. The budget allocation, as it shows on this chart here, was seven point three million. As that fiscal year went along, the fund balance during that fiscal year increased by one point oh five million dollars, and again, remember, at budget discussions, we were looking at a seven point eight million dollar budget request, when our funding allocation was half a million of that seven point three million, short of that request of seven point eight million. And as you had indicated last year, in the slide, of that increase of a million dollars in fourteen fifteen to the fund balance, seven hundred and six thousand of that increase was due to recurring revenue, as it was stated in that slide. And again, in fifteen sixteen, moving forward again, once again, with the uncertainty that accompanies the passage of the state budget and the effect it has here on our local discussions, again, seven point eight million was requested, while the county appropriation was seven point three million. During the fiscal year fifteen sixteen, as the year went on and the year ended, again, in that fiscal year, there was a five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty dollar increase in fund balance, which brought the overall fund balance level at the end of fifteen sixteen to two million dollars. That was an increase, of course, in thirteen fourteen, I think it was, the fund balance was right around three hundred thousand dollars, so when you look at that.
Two hundred seventy-nine.
Two hundred seventy-nine. When you look at that thirteen fourteen comparison, and then look at what had happened up until fifteen sixteen, it's about a one point six million, or four hundred twenty-seven dollar increase, or four hundred twenty-seven percent increase from thirteen fourteen, and at that time, in fifteen sixteen, the ADM was right at forty-four seventy-five, and there was twenty-six point seven two teachers locally paid. Moving into sixteen seventeen this year, as you alluded to, the county had recommended seven point one, and again, looking at, looking at the trends that had occurred from fourteen fifteen and fifteen sixteen, with the seven point three million dollar allocation, and the ability through fourteen fifteen and fifteen sixteen to continue increasing that fund balance by four hundred twenty-seven percent, or one point six million dollars, seven hundred and six thousand of which was due to recurring revenue, and three hundred and sixty of that, I think, was the impact of teachers' assistance and driver's education, which was in the original request. So, when looking at those trends going into sixteen seventeen, and that recommendation of seven point one million, we're saying, we're going to appropriate seven point one million, and in the shortfall, that two hundred thousand could be made up, as you said, using the fund balance, which is what we suggested, up to two hundred thousand dollars. And again, the logic of that is, the reoccurring revenue from the state would be used to cover those expenditures in the operating budget, and what was previously being covered with local, when the state budget was received, could be transferred elsewhere, moved around in the budget. During fiscal year sixteen. During fiscal year 1617, we also contributed, in addition to that $7.1, another $31,800 to complete the Highland group, and made up the teacher supplement, as you alluded to, by $23,000. Yes, and I'm just, to give a history, that, again, in fiscal year 1718, we recommended the funding level of $7.1 million. And at, in fiscal year, at the end of 1617, as we head into 1718, the school system, of course, the locally paid teachers, is up from 1516, from 26 to 30 on all those figures that you provided. And at the, you know, the ADM, we saw in 1617 decline by about 40 from fiscal year 1516. So in 16, in, in the coming fiscal year, the school system had requested $7.3 million. And again, this is just recapping kind of where we're coming from, from the county standpoint, or at least my, not the county, my standpoint in the recommended budget. The request was $7.3 million in operating expenses. And that assumed the House Bill 13, which was the compromise on the class size requirements, assumed no compromise would be met, which would have, which would have been, been upon the local government to about six teaching positions, I think, to a total of $350,000. Again, this, this budget also assumed that $7.3 million, for $1.2 million appropriated from fund balance, that Title II funding on the federal level would be completely eliminated, which would result in two teaching positions being lost. That was, that was estimated about $104,000 that that would cost. And then just then, you had said, it's only looking like now, one and a half teachers to local, rather than the three that were assumed at the time of the proposed budget. Again, the resource facilitator was included in there. And at the time of the proposed budget, I think, again, it goes back to that uncertainty with the, with the state budget, who at the time, this budget was, was taking into account a 5% salary increase for teachers. And as we see negotiations continue, it, I think it was around 3.8%.
And that's, and, and depending on which budget highest, if this budget is highest, that increase won't fix, won't impact our local budget.
Right.
If the house budget is highest, it would minimalize that.
Right. So, you know, with that being said, you know, the, the question comes, and then, you know, when we're looking at budgeting, with the, with the minimal impact that it could have, or no impact, $176,000 was included in that $7.3 million request. And it was tied to the projected 5% salary increase. And another thing that was included in the Senate budget, and is coming in the House budget, and is looking very optimistic, is the small school funding, that I know both of our representatives, Representative Corbin.
And that's a good point. Both, both of the Senate and House budgets that I've included, you, I may just interject real quick. And those, both budgets assume the passage of 1515 in the House budget.
Right. And so that, you know, at the time, this, the proposed budget of $7.3 million was recommended, though, I don't think that was, we were not expecting that at that time.
Well, I, I agree, and that, and that's one of the reasons that we requested a budget, operational budget of $7.3, with that larger professional fund balance, because there's so much uncertainty there.
Right.
But it's also a good indication why we need a large fund balance, or what some people might consider to be a large fund balance. Our auditor would tell us that $1.5 million or $2 million is not quite enough. And I think, if you notice, those other schools, other school systems, their fund balances were comparable, if not larger than ours. And going back to your other point too, because I think it's a very important, is looking at that fund balance, especially the change, net change in fund balance. When we were at $279,000, the net change in fund balance for that particular year was over $700,000. So when you're going down, and you're at zero, you only have one option at that point, and if you have two options, your revenue is increased because you have no control over where you cut your expenses. And I, I'll show you that, where we did cut our expenditures pretty significantly. And the other thing you alluded to, if I might, is the, the reason for that request of $7.8 in fiscal year 1514, had it not been for teacher assistance, as I already said, been projected to be cut in the state budget, we'd probably be looking to request a $7.8 then with the request of $7.3. Now, since y'all didn't appropriate $7.8, which I understand you not appropriated $7.8 due to the uncertainty, we did have to make some precautionary, take some precautionary measures, and to cut additional positions to, in preparation for that possible cut. That particular year, the state didn't release their budget until October, at which time we could not hire teachers, folks back to those positions that we did cut, to be able to pay the teacher's assistance and drop the bill.
And I think, you know, that, again, we, we go back to the uncertainty, and I think that is a good point, because it's ever-evolving, from the first time we meet until the budget gets passed. And we've had some discussions about that, getting back to that small school funding deal, could have an impact of up to $500,000 to making count.
Not to our local budget.
Right, but in teaching positions.
But that, that, it won't, it won't, it won't impact our local budget.
Right, it won't impact the local budget, but it would give $500,000.
It would give six positions.
Six positions.
And, and that dollar, I think, is one of those things that's highly difficult estimate, because we're going to put those positions on the PRC, PRC 001 allotment, and they'll pay the, essentially those teaching positions regardless of their salary.
Right.
And some of those teachers will pay, you know, if they're the top of salaries, they'll earn $2,000 plus benefits. Whereas the, the local, they will only pay for the beginning of the, you know, that, that process is stretched out a bit more.
Right. And so, you know, I, I say that to say that, you know, we face these challenges each year, going back to 1415. And depending on what happens at the state budget, we see positive impacts and we can see negative impacts. But I, I think the, the thing to take away from that is, is that we always work together. And the slides that you showed with our students' test scores, I'll echo what the chairman said. That is kudos to the teachers in this county, to their principals, and the students' willingness to learn. And if, moving forward, I think I just want to be clear that this is a discussion that we have every year, back to 1415. The $7.1, the logic behind that 1718 recommendation, and, you know, I feel like that I have talked back there with my recommended budget, that, that's my recommendation, is, you know, with that $7.3, with all these things like the $176,000 in salaries, with a salary increase that now we're learning could minimumally, or not at all impact the local budget, the $350,000 that was, that would come to the school system as a result of the compromise on House Bill 13, there wouldn't be any, like, for that.
16.
That's, that's a cynical question.
We won't actually save any of that money for the ultimate cost of, but we don't have to skin that.
Right. And if, and if the budget request, the $7.3 million budget request was submitted, and we discussed it, six positions were included in that as a result of a failure to compromise on that. But since that has been compromised, or since a compromise has been found, you know, you take those, back those six positions out, the case will come.
Well, now, that depends on the Senate budget.
Right.
Depends, but lots of those waivers, that's going to actually increase our number of public教师 by eight.
Right. But, but just, as these things have come to fruition.
And that's, I think that's the problem.
You know, still coming to fruition.
You're touching on it. Nothing is to fruition at this point.
Right, well, and I'm, I guess I'm more on the, the expecting things to come to fruition, while you're on the other end saying that nothing will come to fruition, or it might be minimally coming to fruition.
Well, I, I'm.
But, but I say that to say that this is not a, a discussion that we do not have every year. This year in the budget, at $7.1, we were also able to bring that teacher's supplement up to the $480,000, right around $479, as requested by the school system.
I think that we, because it's probably considered, um, then, $479 for next year, is that right?
Yeah, 1718.
And it's probably not going to get to $479 unless the Senate's budget is put in.
We, we get it. So during the same time period, though, in the, the local budget hasn't been down, but the, at the same time, the capital outlay, we've increased capital outlay in fiscal year 1314 to that $100,000.
And that's a new one.
Today is, and today it's $600,000. We've been able to accommodate it again, that the supplements we saw continue to increase as a result of, I think, since 2013, on average, and this is not making the average teacher pay, the 15 and a half percent increase.
Well, but now, that 15 and a half percent increase is put by the, plus the supplement.
Right. So, but the supplements have risen as a result of the salary increases from state. We're trying to.
So the, the average teacher pay in North Carolina, I think, is, is now considered to be lower than $50,000 a year. But that factors in local subsidies, with other counties that are behind, which have $115, $150, to have a larger local supplement.
So, I guess moving forward.
You mentioned, you mentioned the change in fund balance, and that being, I think, if I understood what you said, one of the reasons for the reduction of our operations, operations budget, and I presume that that's what you were indicating.
Yes. Okay, it's 306.
This, this fiscal year, current fiscal year, our fund balance projected net change at this time is $700,000 in the negative. So we're looking at fund balance going from $2 million to about $1.3 million. And the reason for that change is a loss of revenue of $200,000 to be net total, out of our, our fund balance. Another loss of revenue is $91,994 in 10%. That's been budgeted around $150,000 a year, $170,000 a year. This year, we only receive a check of $53,000.
$58,000. That's due to the federal government not to re-operate some of the deals.
But I'm just trying to show that with this net change in fund balance, how volatile school systems' budgets, budgets are. We had to cover $18,000 reduction in self-tax refund, $12,000 reduction in E-RAC, the movement of those, where the high teachers to local, the unfunded bonuses that teachers were given by the state that we had to, we chose to cover, with our fund balance this year. And, and that did not come out of our teacher supplement, that came out of our fund balance. An increase of $61,000 pre-K, we had a pre-K budget supplement with teachers here, $105,000 for Medicaid. And then, the other thing is, one of the reasons that our fund balance increased last year was due to the fact that it was a fiduciary agent for the STEM program in Western Carolina. That was our fund balance, and inflated our, our fund balance artificially. We've now spent about $55,000, and that's contributed to a net gain in our fund balance of $700,000, a lot of issues. But we're going to finish up this fiscal year at somewhere around, um, three, something like that. So when you consider a decline in fund balance this year for those reasons, I hope we'll take that into consideration when we consider that more for.
Right. And it's just like the same thing that we considered in, from going in 1617 to 1516, when $360,000 of the change in fund balance was due to the teacher's assistance and drop the debt funding being on fund balance.
None of these things are, none of these things are the, right, that actually happened this year.
Right. Anybody want to give a summary of that?
What the liaison committee was trying, as you met, was it's not a disagreement between the county and the school. You know, the state, we're paying 20% of our operation costs, because the state, and for a rural county, for our size, that's huge, that's one of the largest in the state. I mean, if you compare it to Orange County, Wake County, what they pay, it's 20% for a county our size, and, and superdental pay. It, that, that's a large amount. We're the only county that pays the supplement at fiscal or way, too. And we're glad we can do that.
We appreciate that.
And, but, what you know, what, leaving out the equation here is, is you got the state involved, and the state's going to keep giving us more and more and more as long as we'll wait for it. And, and where's that going to end, if it ever will end?
Well, and I, I think that's a, a, I think you're exactly right, I think we had to say nothing to get.
And it, and there's, there's a huge chart, and, and we're going to have that presentation, we're going to come by and give that presentation during this round, showing that, but it's getting, worse or worse, it's getting, it's not, it's not improving, it's getting, it's certainly not improving any. And, and yet, a lot of the money you see, if you look at budgets, the charter schools, where they don't have to do nothing, so it's what you have to do, if you really enter public schools, it might, so it's not an argument between the local school board and this county board, you've got the state involved. And that's where it really, the difference is $200,000 is what, you know, is it whatever this board wants to do, but really and truly, what we're definitely looking at is down the road. As superdenduses, it's a big spending, as little as $200,000 of that is fund balance, or as much as $700,000 of that is fund balance. So if that should happen next year, if we're, it could really get tough. So what I would encourage, regardless of what this board is, I do, Mr. Chairman, to get him, when you figure out what the state's going to do, and we always have to wait, this never fails. September last year, end of September, and this is a biennial budget, by the way, this was a two-year deal. So at the end of this budget, when the school can figure out, and Ms. Cook has had to figure out what she, what's really going to happen, I would encourage that, to get on a quarterly basis at least, that between the county and the schools, with that, and the liaison committee, whatever, as far as the financials, that they, don't they think that more often? So we, we could easily next year see, Mr. Bockley said on our lifting that instead of $7.3, he could be easy to say that I'm talking about $8.1. So if we can get in front of that somehow, I don't, I don't, I don't have that, in that honor, nor to spread. But, so the $200,000 is, is not a new point, but it's just a matter of how much the school board is going to spend the cheap more. So, and we hope it's on the low end, but it's going to be somewhere in the middle, we hope. We want to maintain that, if, it's like, like Mr. Bockley said, we want to maintain the education system we have in our county, and we do. It's going to come back to this board to determine it. If they give us that salary, kind of, you know, but it's going to be up to this board to determine what kind of school system we have. I don't probably think that's better, but it's just the way it is.
I regret that it's that way. I wish that the state did pick up somewhere around that.
And I don't think that that's fair to this board, that's just the way it is in this state. And we're all the way up to 46, 47, 44 now? We're really good there. So it's, it's, I mean, I don't know if doing enough's enough to make that taxpayer determine, but I think there's shifts that would speak to it. The $200,000 difference in the budget right now, yes, that's a lot of money, and that's a lot of money in this budget. But overall, looking down the highway, is what, actually state comes what they want to have, is what we're going to be looking at. This time next year, standing there, it could be, could be real good, it could be, not so good, so. But, but I think the school board has done what they have, and I think the county manager makes a great case for his, for his budget, there's no doubt about that. And, but the school board also, it's hard to do a budget, you know, unfortunately.
So just to follow up on one thing that, that Don mentioned, and Don talked about here previously, I think, that there's, I don't think anybody are denied, it's moving forward, forward in financial responsibility, in policy camp. And I think that, that the more involved that, that, that we, we can be with one another, working towards that common goal, I think it helps everyone. uh, working towards that common goal, uh, I think it helps everybody.
Certainly, we certainly appreciate Mr. Shields and all the work that you do, but issues that we're dealing with.
Um, you know, from the, the A's on, that's all, I want to say thank you both to you. Uh, I've worked on this school budget a little bit, and it's kind of a mountain, walking down the beach, and the water comes up, and the sand shifts, that's the budget. And when you turn around, in about five hundred feet, almost land, so, so.
You don't ask any of what I thought you did.
No, 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 it's, any of them disagree with that. They're asking.
And you will go to the beach, regardless of that. So, so I think, thank you to y'all, and thank, thank you, Shields. Uh, you know, I think, I believe Ronnie said, so hard, like, you know, when, when we're on, I'm asking you, uh, you know, I, I understand Ronnie's reluctance and being attached with, with, uh, having the, the department where our school system is going to be moved forward, and people may personally, I don't want to maintain, I want it to be there, but I want, I want our state to be able to, to build that, or, you know, develop on that. Thank you.
And I totally talked about, so when I first came on board here, I saw some information when you kind of commissioned, well, the national energy, states were making contribution about forty-five percent, and I thought, I should, and North Carolina at that time was about three, four percent. But if, but New York does, it's going to go south. And I, I think we see it's going that way.
Well, I, I think, the, the problem for North Carolina is that, um, you have some counties like Slade and Graham County, um, that are not positioned to be able to help the school system, and you have the other extreme, like Wake and Durham, which are in a much better position to help their school system. So you're going to have a huge disparity between rural counties and urban counties of, of types of education that their students are able to receive, depending on where they live. And I don't think that's fair for North Carolina, but I agree, that's, that's a trend, that's true.
Chris, thank you.
I'm going to take that. I post more.
Absolutely, I was just going to comment, Chris, and I, I feel like I've, I'll be honest with you, I kind of feel like I've been really foggy with, uh, the school numbers and Eric's numbers and how they combine and work together, but that presentation tonight was pretty straightforward, and I appreciate it. I have a lot clearer picture of what's going on now, and I'll also recognize that your board was here, and I'll be all that, hey, to speak.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I guess I'm the emotional one now, if that makes any sense. Uh, Dr. Baldwin's done that sort of job, as I just pointed out to you, the financial difficulties that we have in the school system face every year, and, uh, not only, just, uh, we should be able to just figure out what's happening, I don't think we see the worst coming, and you can see it in terms of what's going on. Did we bill fund balance, gentlemen? Yes, we did. Derek made, as Derek went through figures, very obvious that's what we did. I'll promise you, we've done it with a very conscious effort, because we anticipated things coming down. We've talked about, we've used this term about recurring expenses on non-recurring funds, that's how schools are small based. We never know what our recurring funds are going to be, ever. Every year we go through based on what the state's going to give us, every year we have to come to y'all, ask you to make up that difference, barely or unfairly, let that work. So we just simply do not know from year to year, what can we afford? And I promise you, we've made some very hard choices, I'm going to say to you, but it's not. We've had these things that we would love to have done, for example, this year for the two hundred thousand, we had a, a technology facilitator included in our desire, that, that, that facilitator would allow us to utilize better for the education of our children, to reach out to our teachers in our classrooms, better how to utilize the technology that's available, but someone needs to show them how to do it. It's that complicated, so that's one of the things we were talking about in terms of the need for funds. So I guess what I'm coming to y'all is, I'm reassured of listening tonight, I think this board is sharing in our vision that we don't want just the minimal experience for our students, that has never been our goal, we want the maximum we possibly can do. And, uh, all facts and figures aside, and looking at you, we need this two hundred thousand dollars to do the things that we feel like we need to do to continue to advance the education of our children to the max. And if I get quoted on anything by the papers or whatever, I do want to say this one final thing, the graph that Chris showed y'all about the difference in the funding, and when you look at the ratios about what our teachers have accomplished, when you look at those things in comparison, that is, of all things that we talked about, is, I think, one of the most astounding things, we look at our graduation rate, look at the figures on the work keys, and base our performance on all aspects of our students. For us to, in my mind, surpass those counties, what we have is a testament to our educators. I think it goes without saying that we're very proud of them, I match them up against anyone in the state, and frankly, with just love, we just want to come and try to disabuse me of my idea of how good they are from anywhere, be it Orange County, where they like to, and Chapel Hill, where they like to talk about how great they are. Come on down, without people matching up. Our books are open. I've heard sometimes that it's confusing, Chairman Tate and I were having a conversation, he looked at me, I think he's the same way, and I've been in finance for years, that's why it does my livelihood, and I still don't understand it sometimes. It still takes Angie or Chris to come to me and say, on the questions, show me where we're going, and then I have to sit and think about it long and hard to understand that, and that's after nine years of being involved in school finance, it's difficult. But our books are open, I know, hopefully I'll see Carl and I, he has some questions for us recently, Dr. Baldwin, I told, gave you the information that you felt that would help you, I think you did, in terms of that. So anytime y'all have questions about how we do things, ask us, it's no secret, we're not going to hide, we will tell you what we're trying to do, and tell you how we got to our rep. Uh, so fund balance is going to go down, you know, it's coming, I'm glad, frankly, if you're looking at me, am I glad it was built, it is, I am, because we had anticipated things like this occurring and going from there. So emotionally, this money rest in for, we need it, it's going to allow us to do some things that we feel like are necessary for our school system to, to continue to excel. The facts and figures are good, I know where Derek's coming from, he has to do what is obvious, which is to make sure that the county utilizes and spends the funds the best way that they possibly can, and we're doing the same, I promise you. So please consider our requests, we need it desperately, to continue to do what we're trying to do, and any consideration I would give us is most appreciated. I thank y'all for what y'all do, it's not easy, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Gina. Anything further? Good chair. Sure.
Mr. Gellis, my love.
Thanks. I'd like to respectfully touch on one thing, uh, and I do appreciate the two words I've heard, Mr. Lee, the rest of you, about not wanting to maintain, uh, we're not in the school business to maintain. We were maintaining when Russia, when Sputnik got there, and we realized that something happened to them, that's why I failed that, that's true. But, uh, so I appreciate y'all mentioning not maintaining. Along that line, uh, the small school bill, that was only the first one. That came about, it was initiated by our school board, when nobody thought this would be able to get done in our, we believed that some of the verbs were being done in this budget. Uh, that was the school board going to, uh, Mr. Davis at the time, he got it through the Senate two years ago, died in the, this time, we had Mr. Corbin, Representative Corbin, as you know, very pro-education, that's all y'all have been, uh, he joined with him, and that's, it looks like this one pays. But our motivation to go to them, and their motivation to carry it through and fight so hard for it, was for that purpose you said, not to maintain, to increase the quality of education for students and make them, yeah. And like, you know, we all talked about the teachers, what they're doing, they do a great job, but there, there's a lot of those doing a great job, especially teachers. This is their career, they've made, they've made a lifetime of it, and it's on their backs that we've gotten, they would be, where those statistics show, they will, some of them will go be retiring pretty soon. But I go back to that, uh, small school bill, is that was designed, was asked for, and they did it for the purpose not to maintain, but to make things better. So my request would be that you ignore whatever funding, whether it's going, however those positions are going to be, is ignore that. Don't count that in that budget, because that will, hopefully, if we have a budget to maintain here, but we get that shot down, finally something from, you know, go in the opposite direction of what we all see from the state, as, as this point, but this is a positive thing for the state, that was done specifically for the students and teachers to make them count, and nothing else. And that's why I just implore you to, you know, to just put blinders on that, that that should be a bonus, just like the fundraiser would have been, just like when that stadium was built, Mr. Seale, right? That stadium built, Mr. Shields, it was April, and did all those things, and all that was done, and that was just, I promise, made things better, and that's what this building is, and I just appreciate y'all's consideration for that, for that, not being considered as part of making.
Thank you. Forwarding, forward, I'm going to pop a mic so far for two seconds. If you think about society in general and as a whole, there's truly nothing more important, more influential than our teachers are, than how they lead our future businessmen, our future leaders, our future workers, they're truly extremely important in society, which, if you look at what, follow the dollars, if you look at what maybe some of these athletes are making, they're making literally twenty, fifty times more in a single year than what this entire school like is. Something's really kind of messed up for the society, world, for our world, and that's my thought. Mostly, I'll thank y'all for coming, any other questions, what other little part of? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, we have two, I think we have two and a half, we've got two, our general fund does here for the county, so it's two different sort of entities, and every fire department in our county has a varying tax rate based upon number of needs, and decides to, number of calls they run, one of the structures and people they, they protect. This board has one primary goal, and that's to provide the best life and structure safety that we can for the bottom dollar. I hope y'all appreciate that. So anything you said, let's go ahead and bring Franklin up, Franklin. Kevin, Mayor, because I'm going to come on up. I think we had a few questions, I know y'all are, it's about, uh, my best guess on it's about a twenty percent tax increase, what you think, or what you just going to run down, why you're requesting this, I know I've been through with y'all, but, with, with the general public and rest of the community, we have the opportunity to do that, but, well, thank y'all.
Thanks for having us, and, um, for a rundown on our recent, for the increase, we wanted to, uh, increase our staff in, um, twenty-four, seven, two-person air on instead of one, so you can obviously provide a better service for, and also to, uh, start staying inside in our, our part of the country, places are, they're starting to age out, the names are probably, centers will be, people will, year to year, so we've got to get that fund up in some places along there.
Any questions from the board on that, sorry, here.
You know, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to be able to come here tonight and speak on behalf of the town. We certainly value our relationship that we've established with the county, and we hope to continue to go forward with that.
Your boards and, and, or is that?
Yes, sir.
Look, as, as of right now, we have one personnel twenty-four, seven, and we have another firefighter that comes in twelve hours a day, so we're going to increase that second firefighter, about fifteen twelve hours a day, and we want to have a few personnel there twenty-four, seven, responding at all.
What's the fund balance?
After this year, it's going to be down to.
It'll drop down to forty-five thousand dollars.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm just asking for terminal model, so if you kind of ready, give us a note of your follow-up, and you can ask the press and pass over here, and where you are now.
Well, I mean, last year, or I guess, I mean, what leadership, in, in twenty-two, twenty-six, and then it increased, uh, roughly three hundred dollars in a year, so it went from about seventeen forty to two thousand thirty-four.
It's one year.
You get back five years, around twelve hundred dollars, five years, but. It's about fifteen percent increase from last.
Seventeen forty.
Not a day, you're roughly six hundred dollars. Two thousand thirty-four, so that's about three months ago.
And your increasing, President Tyler, if not, this is a college.
Because of just volunteers, you know, the lack of volunteers, this state, I know you can't get a questionnaire sent out, and everybody's hurting you in terms of volunteers, improve your retention, started getting them out the end of the night, there's been multiple calls where the senior back, and I had responded to multiple calls, I can say, for me, that's a safe issue for me, I'd rather have two guys respond every, you don't know what you're getting into, you're going to, but, um, that would be minimum staff before us, and two guys twenty-four, seven.
From, from what I would consider my bedtime, if I'm ten o'clock, you know, when I get up at four to five, I consider that, I mean, assuming that, what, I mean, is your largest number of calls that have, there are no dollars?
Yes, we, uh, after nine o'clock at night, we're down to one personnel right now, roughly, we're up to five hundred dollars back in the day, so, so more than we're called.
What, you're going to replace, or, you, you, recently, I mean, you have, I think, I think, uh.
Yeah, well, as of right now, we're, we're a thousand dollars short from that station from our last, I was, uh, a few thousand, so, so we're going to replace that for, I think, I think that doesn't give what we can do with those, you know, in places, but you're talking about spending those three hundred dollars on the output, ready to.
We do, we have, um, two fire truck debt, that's the only debt that the Franklin Fire Department has, we have consolidated those payments into one annual payment of around seventy-six thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars, and that will be paid off in the year twenty twenty-three. The total debt on both of those apparatus, once set in them, will be one point five million dollars.
Is there a, is there any? In this situation, is the rate going to change for insurance, is the, is it going to be a bad debt?
Coming for right now, if we go off for one cent.
Yes.
Well, they'll get the benefit of having two personnel show up for every, any call, any fire call, red, they're ready.
Do they, they're not going to be insurance?
Not with this, but, uh, as we replace trucks, and trucks, any help.
You're ready in space, is that?
Here we have the next rate.
If you're married, what's the rate in the, um?
It's a thirty-four right now, which is pretty good. It's our statement. Anything under six, if not even three, first.
So what is the rate, you, you know, that's your, each term, is it, obviously, insurance production?
Now, you go, we're going to try, we've, we've got to say ahead of, we're not really ahead of, we're behind, you fall right there, I mean, have it on the, for certain, we just start replacing. Seven apparatus in the next twenty-five years, that takes special life cycle of fire trucks twenty-five years. And that's seven, every four years, we need to replace a truck. We have your question in five.
Sure. I'm more interested in what areas we're looking to here, and it is, as I mentioned, when I opened up tonight, about, let's say, taxes, tax increases, extremely serious for obvious reasons. And I guess, we've seen, it's good for us, it's good for communities, that we can see that the tax increases will give a lot of benefits, potentially in insurance rates and that. I'll ask you a couple of questions. I know that you have a couple of mention boxes, the six, because I'm standing, four, five, three fours. You've got a couple of areas that are kind of outlined that are in place, and a lot of it's due to the distance from the station. I'm just asking, it's totally up to where you feel comfortable asking, if you have to, would you consider, if another department, provide a lower insurance rate for those areas when you consider it?
I mean, if they did provide that, you're right. And that's some of the areas, and I'll look at it today. One area in particular is a ton of road. We checked the insurance companies, they're showing up all the time, so they're not showing up the last. So I don't want to change that, I didn't know that, but we checked, I'm sure every address up there, and the insurance kind of popped up every last time. They're not showing up the last. And with our tax rate, giving some loads, you give it to somebody else, tax rate might be a bit much. That's not going to give you a home, but it'll give you a lot.
Absolutely. To me, just from a completely logical standpoint, you said here as Chair of the Board, as if you have a homeowner with just a simple sign of this board is changing fire district, could potentially either get a fire tax increase or increase in the insurance increase difference, and it ends up as a down load for that county resident?
Yeah, I would actually, I would always make insurance, love my time, everyone, thanks for the most possible, yeah.
Well, that's good to know. I mean, I'm not saying we are, it's good to know that we're pretty good.
Well, I, well, and I did envision you to fire this, because as Chairman alluded to, fire taxes that you're requesting an increase in only affects the people in the Franklin precinct. And I think Mr. Lill and Mr. Shields represents those constituents. I represent working down in Iowa. Hey, Mr. Lill, well, two of you guys have ten or more to live, certainly. Just a few things in here. For four years I've been on the board, I've advocated for consistency in our fire protection departments. It's, we're all over the board. We've got eleven departments, some people, from your request, I think, of thirty-eight thousand dollars for fire call assistance, all the way, three departments have zero to pay the firemen when they respond to a call. It's all over the board. And your projections here or your proposals, I see in there dental, health insurance, and also retirement, paying to retirement fund and a 401K. Those are good benefits. And I'm not being critical because you're requesting that, you're taking care of your members. There's even county employees don't get dental insurance. But none of the other paid employees, and there's no consistency in how we determine where we have paid employees in these other fire departments. This is every year or two, well, after a three, eight departments done requests, without too much logic, in my opinion, we approve those requests, but there, we seem to be getting more inconsistent in how we fund fire departments. Totally making counties about 3.26 million dollars of taxpayer money goes to local fire departments. And I appreciate you, Summer, for your presentation here, that very detailed. Couple of things strike me is, this is called the Town of Franklin Fire Department. What does the Town of Franklin contribute to the funding of this fire department?
Well, one thing that y'all note is, I'm sure you'll notice, administrative reimbursement. Part of that of what the Town of Franklin does contribute is, we offer financial, we keep up with all the fire department's financials, audits, as far as administration, we're there, as far as IT services, we try and provide that within that documentation. Now, in previous years, and this is something we would like to look at moving forward, is is there a way for the town to maybe continue to make a contribution to the fire department's current operating expenditures? And that's something we would like to look at, certainly the Town of Highlands is able to do that. So we would like to see if we could do more on our end as well.
And I'm not being critical, I'm asking these questions, and I know that you're unaware of the document that Warren gave prepared about this. He's addressed some serious issues that I'm talking about here, and I think exist. And this is a 22.47% increase, based on my math, I'm not a mathematician, but this is a twenty-something percent increase in the fire tax to the residents of Franklin. Somebody else is vote, somebody else is responsibility. So that's pretty significant in one year.
Some others in the, some others in the A E P J don't get to vote and get paid the tax.
Oh, you? But you're a representative, too.
But I'm in the Town A P J.
But you get to vote on this as a measure, whether or not to increase, okay. And I get to vote on it also, and it doesn't affect me or my direct constituents, I represent all the taxpayers of my county, primarily in the lower areas. So this is a good model, I think, for fire departments. Absolutely. It's the cream of our eleven departments, if this budget request is approved. I just, I wish we could get around the table with Warren's recommendations. And Jimmy alluded to some issues we have, and necessary reasons, and you can't get insurance. So it's tens, you can't get insurance. Nines, they don't want to insure you. Eights and sevens, there's no benefit as far as your lower tax rate. So at some point soon, I think we need to get around the table. And listen, we're up to three or four million dollars in fire department fees, added to our forty-nine point seven million dollar budget. We're looking to pick three million dollars of taxpayer money, like the county, we can rate a load on here a few days, a few weeks. So I appreciate your presentation, your documentation is sufficient, it's an excellent program for your firemen, should be approved. But I'd like to see a county-wide discussion on how we treat our fire departments and our firemen and our volunteers. But thank those that you're coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Does this have any further questions, Sarah? Somebody else?
Summer, you can drop something out, regardless to the town funding the fire department at some level. Is this how these districts, they do that? Where they have a county fire department?
It's dependent upon your tax rate. And I know in previous years, as you know, the Town of Franklin did sustain their current fire department through adult armed taxes, until I believe it was 1999, when the districts were created. And one thing that was actually able to be purchased for that was some of the existing property down at the fire department now.
Well, here's a correction on that, it's the one call. The county started fire, did it in 1985. That was first thing I set up on the county. And at that time, max was seventy-seven dollars a house. You had a million dollar house, that's what, a hundred and thirty thousand, seventy-seven dollars. That was changed back in the nineties. But in Franklin District, the E P J people, the people not in city limits, have always paid a greater percentage than whatever the city has budgeted. Right now, it's fifty-one percent plus, the people outside city pays, that's six hundred thousand dollars. Back when it was in eighty-five, the percentage was still the same, even when the town funded it. So it's yes and no. County residents fund city fire department. Highlands, same example. The difference is, you have ninety percent of the people don't live in Highlands, so you thought they could cover this, which you have to cover. But down here, you actually got more residents that pay taxes, complain more about the fire tax than anywhere else in the county.
If I may address that, if we could. One thing to notice, well, and I believe our fire chief has gotten some statistics of how much it does cost the Town of Franklin to try and provide that service out into the county districts. Would you like to go over that?
I mean, we're running, obviously, takes that two thousand. Some policy group last year, and by that time, our budget, we're looking, it costs about three hundred, every hour is a call. There's some of the other departments, as you were saying, they're getting about twelve hundreds, maybe fifteen hundred dollars per call that they go and they respond to. For the number that we can be appreciating going through the years, I mean, you got to stay ahead of it. And they just don't seem able to, so we can start comparing what they started places at. We got the vision out, next year, perhaps twenty-five years, you're getting so, we haven't placed that one yet.
Yeah, one final thing that I was able to find today was actually the original 1986 agreement, when the Town of Franklin and the county first kind of established this. I have copies to pass out as well, just kind of for a little bit of future knowledge, where we come from.
What is this document? We got, is on the, where's that? That one? Okay, I appreciate that. Some of those things you alluded to, or injured, but I'm not appreciating, but I will take that for value.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate your time. Thank you for all the hard work.
They don't make candy cubes.
They are. Thank you for all your hard work, we appreciate it.
I know all y'all probably know this, but I've been a volunteer fireman, I think in about eighteen here now. And we're talking about that three plus million dollars call, that's probably a drop in the bucket if we didn't have volunteers to, to also provide fire services for this county. As far as reimbursement calls, I think at Highlands right now, we're getting, if you make forty percent of the calls, you get like fifteen hundred dollars every six months, otherwise you get a ten dollar call.
Highlands?
Highlands, yeah.
I think they, that's a thousand dollars is all we're getting there in their fire call back.
Yeah, I can tell you, it's like fifteen hundred dollars every six months, I believe. Or do you know, I'm sure what? What Highlands pays their firm, I think it's fifteen hundred every four months, six months, if you make forty percent of it. What's important on this is, is that, you know, these volunteers, I personally, a proponent of giving back to them, I understand the volunteers, you're giving your effort every year, they're getting more training, more calls, and you got your own gaps you got to pay for, you got to go turn, turn the black ball on at 2:00 AM, you're paying the electricity. So I'm a proponent in reimbursement as well.
I don't show up, I'm a pretty sure. Yeah.
We can't pay those three hundred people at minimum wage. Three million, a little bit.
I'm not saying it's not a good deal, but there's...
No, I don't disagree with you, we have some...
Some great inconsistencies in how we use that money.
I agree.
All right. I think that's it. Burnham Town, welcome. Jake, this is Castle.
Thank you for having us. I think I have some information I'd like to share with first. This is Mike Schuler, he's our assistant chief, and he is our one person who managed the station during the daylight hours, but he's only on an eight-hour shift. But you have to understand that most of our folks work out of district. When we approached you last to get some money, we asked for about half what was actually the person on, an eight-hour shift during the day. So since everybody's working out of district, our goal was four years ago, though, was man that station to reduce our response calls, and since most of our volunteers work out of the district, that meant we could get a truck to the scene from that if we had somebody there during the daytime call. They could get the truck to the scene and me. At that time, I was working at the old health department building, there were a couple of cases that I drove from there to our station, got a truck, and back to the fire. That's not a good response. And we have done that, that was one of our goals. We wanted to get that equipment and get there quick. The next thing we want to do is upgrade the main station. We've done some renovations, it was built in 1980, leaky roof. Well, in the eighties. And leaky roof and several things, we were able to replace that, we got that done, we got the inside upgraded. You've not been in it, it's a little more suitable, we've got some of those things under control and whatever, so we've done that. We did get our OSFM rating from a nine S to an eight B, a little over a year ago. There are some advantages, tax advantages, I think the study that Warren proposed, he had just three different agent quotes, and I used some averages in my numbers, but we were able to drop that rating to an eight B, which did help with some insurance companies, some don't operate, but some do, and it does mean some considerable savings for folks within that five mile district. The other thing we wanted to do was be able to locate some land that was strategically located, to cover those areas on Olive Hill and Rose Creek and wherever, where there are homes that are in our six mile district that were still attending, and they were unable to get insurance, or not able to get insurance because they were in that district, that was no incentive. In 2015, we had a total of 177 calls, which is just a little over twice what we had five years earlier. In 2016, we had 251 calls in that district. And you've got to understand, we're one of the most rural, partially populated districts, so our cost per call is a little bit more than some of the other ones, but not as much as a lot of them. Year-to-date, we've had eighty-six calls this year, last year at this time, we've had seventy-one. So we're up another fifteen calls this year, so far this year. We've had 1,280 structures in our district, according to the study, and it cost about 722 dollars per response. But we're not in the eleven, twelve hundred dollar range, we're somewhere in the middle of those ranges, we're very rural, so we've managed our money well. The only ones that were lower than that in that study were Clark's Chapel, Coliseum, Franklin, and Highlands, which were densely populated areas compared to Burnham Town. A cost per capita on our call, we were 58 dollars. Clark's Chapel, Franklin, Highlands, Otto, and West Macon were a little less, and again, those are both densely populated areas, so looking at those. This increase would allow us to do a full operation down at our new substation, which is strategically located, probably in the Olive Hill structures. I think we showed there were 126 structures. I ran a few numbers on that, they'll be able to take advantage of the eight B once they get within five miles of those folks. They'll save around 8,200 dollars, and that's just the average of what the eight B reduced insurance, according to our recent study we've done. So it'll pick up the majority of those, with the exception, someone lower Burnham Town, some upper Ray Creek. The very far end of that, there's just a few sparse lots right out there that we're still not going to be within five miles, but there's no real place we could locate a station anywhere that we're going to put those within coverage. So that picked up most of that. Our other goal this increase is to lower that eight B down to that six to give some advantages. And those advantages, if, once we take in those other 126 structures, I just figured the half of them being insured at over a hundred thousand dollars was that 8,200 dollars that they immediately change, it'll give us a total of about 81,000 dollars worth of reduction in homeowners insurance, when and if we get that down to a six. And that's assuming that half of those structures are insured for a hundred thousand dollars. If half of the structures, if half of the 1,280 structures in our district are insured at a hundred thousand dollars, and that was all, the other ones had no insurance, our district would save around 81,300 and some odd dollars in insurance, and that's just using an average number one's figures from this, from this study that Paul alluded to. It's our predictions, but so I use, if you all had a chance to read that, and give you those numbers. Couple of questions that were asked, and Mr. Tate and I discussed that, we did include in our budget about 5,000 dollars for some part-time help. We, that'll be 350 to 400 hours a year. That will allow us to provide some weekend coverage in those high rush fire danger weekends where we have three or above fire rating from Forest Service, we have a lot of brush fires, and we are pretty rural. Again, I said there was 136 structures, so I kind of covered that. We currently have 32 members on our roster, that allows us to man this substation, that's what OSFM requires. There were some questions about how do we build a station on property that we do not own. We have a long-term lease that was taken with the Baptist Children's Home Society. It's renewable in five-year increments for 25 years, with five-year increments after that, and with the option to purchase the property itself after they're able to sell. The way their property is set up in a trust, they've got about 55 years on it before they can actually need that property to anybody else. We have several institutions right in and around that area that we have had frequent calls to. The Iowa School is close to that, so strategically... The Iowa School is close to that, so strategically, we've located close to our businesses and interest to the community, and that allows someone coming from town to pick up that second truck at that time coming in. So the loan is organized through Integra Bank, they gave us good rate, they were able to fund that structure on the lease property with those terms, and we did have surveys and attorneys do a title search, paid for that, and checked it out, everything's kosher, everything's kosher with the Baptist Children's Home. That's my presentation.
How much is your payment?
For the lease on the land?
No, for the building.
It's not exactly set in stone right now, but it's around twenty-one, twenty-two hundred dollars a month. We'll get it finalized and get a C O right now, it's not even a pay-in.
Can you make, if this is not approved, can you make the debt?
We can pay the debt, we won't close the doors, but these goals we've set out are gonna be hard to do, it's gonna be hard to provide that insurance advantage to those in that five-mile district. We have to have an OSFM inspection and get that substation certified. Once we've done that, couple of things we have done in addition to this is we picked up a truck, a service truck, which is something that's required for an OSFM inspection. The other thing we've done, we, we got a used four-wheel-drive tanker that was purchased from, tanker pumper that was purchased from Clay County, it's not new by any means, we've got a good deal on it, but it is four-wheel drive, and it allows us to get some of these rough rural areas, we haven't been able to really get a mainline company to, and any of these, then, up in some of those places, understand what I'm talking about. We had a question about that just today.
On your lease costs?
Yes.
Your rate is thirty-one percent. Is that called support?
It's not built into it, but you have to understand what our lease cost is. We've got two point two acres, our first year, it cost us two hundred dollars.
What's the ag cost for that?
It's, it's really the ag rates that we use that, it has a small increase, like I think it's an increase per year going into that for the first twenty-five years, so really, even at the end, the twenty-five-year lease, we didn't pay the interest on what it cost us to buy the property. And it does have a four percent increase. Well, in twenty-five years, we renegotiate that base on what they're getting to pay the property, and then we'll go.
I have a question. What can you use for that?
I guess a good name, we asked and they said they would fund it. Collateral, the contents.
It would likely be the least that they have.
And we paid for a lot of the buildings, the building's strategically located also near the airport. Many of the roads, roads that go across the airport, um, they're basically in the back door of the airport, and so, you know, we'd have access to that boat on our station, but the airport needs help, so we have neutralized with nine, another turret at the airport, we can get in there fairly easily.
The substation is operational today?
They're closed weekend of tomorrow.
And then, do you have volunteers?
With volunteers, we do have enough to staff, and we have thirty-two members currently. We have to have twenty-eight, and I'm correct, it's twenty members plus eight for each substation. So if you add a substation, it requires eight more, but we, currently, we have enough to do that, we have four experts.
Oh, below that, great feature.
Merchandise, puts it on probation, makes us get with it, and you have to recruit, or, or if that happens, Ken, I'm not saying it can't happen, volunteers are hard to recruit, there's a lot of training required. A lot more reports go in, a lot of stuff going in, I think there were one other question was, our internet calls were high on our budget, very comfortable speaking of this, we're too far. And, and I know I talked to Carl about this one time, we're too far from DSL hookup, so we had to go on satellite. On the phone line, it took us about six hours to download the required, one required report for all of it. It's that slow. We ended up having to use satellite internet, which is a bit more expensive at our main station. I think they're all merch in one anymore, or they're all, they just got a different name, but it's-
And we all said, when they explained, uh, the top site file, uh, to lower, uh, the state, they said, they started to use yours.
Well, why, I said, if you less room, you could off the call, or you handled other problems.
So this increase, we all said, by the end of the year.
Yeah, well, we, provided we get that inspection, we do have the equipment necessary for getting all the equipment operational and whatever, and getting all the work points and everything certified again, and re-pickers, and pre-plans and those things, then we have to have to get that full inspection.
What's your own balance today?
Well, we have thirty thousand, but we've got about fifteen thousand, that's the mid, so we're down to fifteen thousand. You have to understand, we're in the same boat frankly, as we're gonna be in a situation of replacing trucks in a few years too, uh, because of age or refurbishment, and, and, well, that is an option. We will be certified by UL and given repurposed. So some of the, some of it's still, it's pretty tight. Few unexpected expenses on the substation that used some of that. For instance, we lost an alternator here in Hunkstead last night on a truck, it went up right at a thousand, but an alternator by some fire truck. If they take, you know, I just told you the other day, I said, you know, you can't pay the check for a thousand dollars for paper, a repair for that, or put two tires on Hunk, that's over a five-year hold, and have to be replaced. Doesn't matter that they're not going out, five years, I mean, that's, that's a replacement.
Can we talk about the nine number?
Yes.
Or is there any way to get this for us?
Or through the request, can I? We did, well, we had one member that was not present, and two elements, and has not been, but several others have, several others.
Ken, is there any advantage to airport? I would obviously, if our station didn't play for it, is there any financial advantage to, to have an airport having that substation play for ten?
Well, we're exploring that, some of the power to be, but to build shit that substation, that's certified, we have to cross that bridge, if we do have a community member who has part of the experience, please, with those folks, and, uh, see if they'll help us look into that, and have a figure out that. I would thank the airport for bringing that on the production. Well, we, once we get this station up and operational, we're gonna try to schedule, and they will, will be all.
You're a little early in the project, can you?
I don't know what they're gonna put right there.
You got a, you got a man arm, a man arm from there. I can think, I, I just, we've had a conversation, but I can think.
The substation we built, and, and there has been some talk about why they built such a station, why they built it like it is, is designed in front of you where their groundwork and units plant on the road. It is designed where it can be headed on to in future years, not without, you know, not to destroy the whole building, start over, but, you know, we looked at some dumb buildings, about in place in twenty, twenty-five years, we didn't have a building, we need to add on to it, we got to do a whole other modification, add on to it. The building we're in currently is a, is enough, we had to do some extensive repairs, we simply called it back.
That building is quite a thing for them.
Yeah, and that's my district, so I'll ask you some questions, and I think Jimmy sent you a list of questions on May the twenty-fifth, about fourteen questions, and I've not been privileged to, to respond, did you respond to those in writing?
We, um, well, we want to have a rest of those questions, every, uh, children, because the eyes on the fire department, so I just kinda wanna get them to have, uh, what type of questions we answered, that's what we're looking for, so, he has not publicly answered that, and he's, you know, answering a bunch of dates.
I think some of the ones who are in my presentation were, in the presentation, how many different structures were gonna be pulled in from the five to six-mile district, uh, whatever, but ask away.
What, what is the total cost of this project, from start to finish?
Well, we hadn't got a grand total yet, because there's still a few incidentals we had to go back and, uh, costed a little more, but we ended up having to pave all of the driveway that was a county's, uh, heads, we had traveled it, a couple of them they inspected, we had traveled the driveway, so we did it. That wasn't good enough, we had to go back and pave it, they were closing down asphalt plants, we did get twenty-five thousand dollars from the state to cover part of that cost, so it, it ran over what our anticipated budget was, about fifty-four thousand, it cost us around sixty to do it, concrete, we had six, six inch concrete with wire reinforcing in it, so, so that's done, so we did have a few cost overruns. We were running right at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars total, twelve, everything. There's a little bit over seven thousand square feet in that structure.
Is that just on one level or is that one?
One level is seventy by seven, but you, you end up with that, but then we have over half of that structure, there's another half, that half of it, we need to go.
Ken, it, it's this budget's over five hundred thousand dollars, but fire departments down in the same meeting standards, sub would be, for example, the town of Franklin or the town of Halligan would be, but these are private non-profit corporations, and they are not.
We did put it out, and we got several folks in structure from pretty whole different builders. One of them did give us a low bid, but then they're our business, so that would help us. They weren't gonna rebuild the structure anyway, uh, the metal building was higher, it was six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Stick-built building was the best thing, the loan we borrowed is only three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We had them set aside money for several years, trying to locate suitable place of property and area to locate it, so. So our loan is not the three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but we paid and used grant money to cover quite a bit of it, and, I think again, we've also had some community members that have donated a lot of work to that building.
And you're planning to get open S U C, uh, what is the total cost?
Last time they were in the toll system, not at main station.
Agress, the most. Well, we saved most of the whole thing down last fall when we were having brushfires everywhere, and you probably drove by there and saw that, and-
Didn't burn?
Of course, it didn't burn, but, uh, really, we'd rather not put straw and stuff around the building we did under construction, and it was dry.
And Jimmy sold grass everywhere, like. Are there any legal issues with the contract or anything now?
Not that we're aware of, trying to get it fixed.
Uh, what was the purpose of this design, when you look at the standard substation throughout western North Carolina country, for me, also the casual, if you look at a frame, a metal building with two or three bays, this thing has elaborate facade, glass doors, sleeping, does it have sleeping quarters in it?
Yeah, it has stories upstairs.
It has what?
It has some stories upstairs, it is designed where later on it could be, if we had to have them in the station, but, uh, they would have to do some, a lot of work done.
Pretty elaborate design, the substation.
Well, it's designed to build on, at one time, it was, the, one of the proposals was metal on the bay area and then the meeting room and, and that section, porch, or the kitchen and meeting room and whatever, but it was designed in order, as the population grows, and you can tell by our number of calls, it's really grown, we're double calls, we get four years, uh, but we, we're gonna be required to have more equipment as the population grows, cover more areas, so it's designed where we could head. Two, it's designed as a drive-through, and I think if you go to some, uh, down in the central part of the state, I know, are designed that way to have drive-through doors where you can line the trucks up, no fail, all hit the road together, so it's designed that way, and it's just, it's just a change of being a stick-built building from a metal building. And like Mike said, the bid came back on a stick-built building last, Ronnie, you let me go through it. It was less than the metal.
He did the metal?
I did the metal.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that, no, it, uh, your plans to fund this thing, pay for it, what was under discussion prior to actually constructing it, I mean, did you know that you would have to present or come to the board with a fire, with a tax increase, request, fund this project?
We're not gonna have to request funds, funds from this board to fund this project, but to make this thing fully operational and to get all the benefits out of this project for our community members. To get the OSFM rating, we're gonna have to have training hours, we're gonna have to have, uh, pre-plans done on all of the structures over-
Thirty-two hundred square feet now?
Thirty-eight hundred square feet.
Thirty-eight hundred square feet, I believe, is that what you said there?
So, so we have to do pre-plans and notebooks and things, so there's a lot of work and training that goes into getting the other things. We're not gonna close the doors if you don't give us this fund. We will still operate, but we're not gonna be able to operate at the level that's gonna benefit the community for lower the insurance ratings, those benefits of responding quicker and, and adding the training for the volunteer and then retention, there's some other things that go into the fire department other than the building. We did, we had the most elaborate building, we had the boardroom with oak paneling and everything, but if we didn't have the people and funds to operate, it would be a disaster.
And just, you know, what will this do to the fire tax rate in Burnetown Island, if y'all look at that? Now we're point eight six.
And it's gonna take it a little lower, point one, one point two. It won't be, it won't be as much as some of the other parts.
Ten point four six.
Ten point four six. And that, that has to do with the value of what's, what's, the tax valuation in that area and the collection rate, it's kind of pulled it back down, so, you know, it's really hard to figure that because that changes from year to year.
It's twenty to ten point four six and ten point four now, will be the new billage rate for the rest of Burnetown Island. That's a twenty-one percent increase over the current fire tax rate. That's pretty big here, twenty-one percent, same as Franklin, twenty-two percent. That's needed, that's a pretty big request, I'm not saying it's not worthy, but when we, when we hodgepodge the approach of funding fire departments and raising taxes for fire departments, it seems that we get further apart from having a level playing field for all the fire departments. Tax rates for residents, we've gotta get around the table. Keep harping this, harping for four years, we got nowhere. You know, we gotta sit down and seriously look at this thing, I can't, I can't vote for a twenty percent increase, I can't vote for Franklin, I can't vote for a twenty percent increase in one year to fund anything. That's, that's a major hit, so, I appreciate, I mean, appreciate your service. I was involved in the fire department, we moved from the fire, from the airport to Younts Creek in nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen eighty-nine, uh, at that time, we didn't have to think about substations, we were just, we were, that's why we kept, we burned the call down there, it's it, we didn't have stations there.
We didn't plan on a forty-one percent increase in the number of calls last year either, but when you fund those calls, and that's, that's part of where we are today, our calls have gone up so much from a hundred and seventy-seven calls to about fifteen to two fifty-one, and then again, the number we've had this year is still going up, it's not like it's, it's not like it's going away. More calls, pay more money, and more fuel.
Yes, your question, it's, I would recall, is if you don't have, or if the board decides, and this is, it is, and you agree, it is a large increase to have one week. If, let's say the board decides that, that not to fund all that at one time, and you're saying that that is, you'd have to have all this one time, you know, I know the calls are up, and that's, that's the best argument you have, that's service to people, that's, that's what you like. Right. So, and, uh, Mike Schuler is the one who's, I know that, but actually, we've been working on it, I mean, it's amazing how many calls you do, yeah, I mean, it surprises me, so, anyway, but what is, if, are, well, I'm just flat out, any fluff in the requests that you got? I mean, are there- I mean, are there any, do you have any place to, can this board consider, do you have to have exactly what you requested to do what you wanted in part of that?
We can do most of what we want to do. Mike started a community program where we have, and for lack of a better term, we call them pretty much flyers, but we have elderly people in the community that have health problems, live alone, or maybe a couple that has problems. He tries to get by and visit them periodically, see if they need anything, help them with something, and something Mike started on his own to kind of help out the community and be seen. He wrote grants with OSFM for smoke detectors, indoor type smoke detectors, so when we encounter a home or situation of call, we have a couple like that. We also have forms at the station they can fill out, and we have a couple of train members that actually go in and install those smoke detectors, so we've started some programs that we may not be able to continue. Not a whole lot of fluff in there, you can say we don't need management station, we can insert a fire 92, not part-time hours if you want to, you know, you can just tell me where you want to test, what you don't want us to do, and that's what we'll do.
I apologize, I corrected the chairman on the fire call payment, how it's thirty-five thousand versus a thousand, I know that your request is your fire call assistance is paid for for ten thousand, for buying kowees is zero. So there's a great inconsistency, those are things we need to be working to get into one, and I don't think, Mike, do you have any more health insurance?
No.
If you look at the salaries of the paid firemen in every fire department, some pretty good discrepancies there. So I'm not saying let's stop the fire business, let's get, let's get around the table and get some consistency in this thing, I mean, the fire pay. Full payments are important for people to come out, ten dollars, what's yours, ten dollars?
It's seven for members and ten for the officer, but the officers don't get calls, call pay for tomato, or going to pick up this and do reports and meet the horn and bring radios in and out.
Well, that ain't nothing, seven dollars, you know, I mean, that.
It's, it's not a whole lot, and I think you're going to see some discrepancy, I think some of these other departments have fire call payments, they might call them something else. However, every department is not on exactly the same accounting program.
And reporting, that's exactly right.
So to get things, to come out with the county budget, there's some things, you know, you have to put in there, where do I put food when I have a fire call? You know, there's nothing in there for food, but when I got folks out there, six, seven, eight, ten hours on a brush fire, I've got to feed them. So, I'm not saying it's a bad program, it's that way, we're going to try to set up our county, a county system that way, we're trying to change that over with a new trailer if you like, but we just, you know, we've got things that just don't fit that program.
Those are things we need to work on, get that consistent.
Take a look at the IRS nine ninety and see how that fits with a volunteer fire department. You want to try to have a nightmare filling something else. Some are shaking their heads, you know what I'm talking about, don't you?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I thought we addressed a little bit of what I was sure you were saying there, I think everyone of us in here are on the same page, and I think we're warned, and we're gonna study getting some thoughts together on where we might go, and something's going to be definitely on our agenda this coming year, because we're moving forward.
Since we're bringing that up, discussion, how do we, how do we, how do we advance that? I think these.
We've got to get to our budget, and we'll have a little time to sit down.
I apologize.
Yeah, we'll have a little time forward and start talking.
We need to do, because this is a stimulus here, when we have twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two percent increases, I think that's the catalyst, we need to force us around the table to do this thing.
I mean, since I've been on the government, I've gone through years with some fire departments and taxes and prices and some signals, maybe one or two, three more. I don't disagree with you here, get off.
Oldest do that one.
My question from Jordan, select one.
I want to expand on something you said from the first part, you were talking about the departments that are here today, and those of us who seem to all participate in this meeting. Education, we talked about that a little earlier, and it's very important, we must recognize that, the people that are going to take our place up here in my place, and these folks here, the sheriff's still here, and between he and I, these folks over here, we're about a twenty-seven percent party vote. Very important, public safety, as they talk to our artists and do all that, one of the most important decisions that you're ever going to make, sitting behind that desk right there, it's important for folks like those kids that we're trying to educate, we've got to keep them safe while we're educating, we've also got to keep them safe on the way back and forth to school, we've got to keep them safe at home. So I don't want to ever underestimate or ever lessen the importance of public safety for anybody. I don't, sometimes I may not stand up, and I may not be as emphatic as I probably should be, but I want this board to understand, and I want the public to understand, we, the reason we come to these meetings, the reason that we're here is the importance that we place as agency here on keeping kids safe, parents safe, grandparents safe, the people that are passing through Macon County, going to see the kids graduating from high school in Jackson County, the folks that are, the whole gamut of folks that we have to protect on there, that's a lot of common truth, that we emphasize that to the public, and that's why we're here, that's why we're here talking to you now, and a lot of others about funding this. And if you have any questions about anything else that I can help you with, I'll be glad to answer.
I have a quick question, I'm just interested.
Let's get in recess for.
Call me back to work, and I'll take a little executive privilege and go over to the libraries here when we go, next month, come on. Welcome.
Thanks, I know most of you, Jordan, and I'm the chair of the library board, and really just want to say thank you for what you all have done for us over the years, and we want that to continue. I would like to digress if I could for a minute, and just say that I appreciate what Warren and the fire departments are doing, and just as a personal testimony, my insurance went down seven hundred dollars a year, I live in the Colosseum area, and it was because the fire department was cert, changed certifications and improved. And truthfully, I am more than happy to give back some of that in a tax increase, if that's what it takes, if we can make all the fire departments better, because that is important, and I saw it firsthand, so, just, I just want to say that.
You're saying your, your insurance went down a lot more than, Colosseum hasn't had a fire tax increase in a long time.
Right.
It would probably have been a lot greater than that.
If we had been.
And you don't have to wait for a tax increase, you have that like a, you could make an arrangement.
Okay, actually, we, we do support the fire, we do support the Colosseum Fire Department in all they do. I really want to just make you all aware of some of the things that we're doing and some of the challenges we face. And I, I come from Atlanta, and we have a different level of wages and all, but I was appalled when I got to the library and found that thirteen of our people are making less than ten fifty, I'm sorry, less than eleven dollars an hour, they're making ten fifty or ten dollars an hour. That's what I live on. I couldn't, I, I personally could not live on that, even if I changed the way I, in, in our budget, we are asking to be able to give them fifty cent increase. Now, for a full-time person, that's a thousand dollars, that's not a lot. And I know you all have all kinds of things, and I've been sitting here listening to where you've got to spend your money. But if, if nothing else, with the money that we are asking for, some of it is going towards that salary increase of fifty cents. We have ancient computers, and you all did graciously give us a one-time non-recurring amount to purchase some computers that are used for the folks that come into the library. But our computers that we use every day, the staff uses, some of them are eight years old. Imagine what it's like to use a computer that's that old and to maintain it. And so our technology demands are there. Just as a school, listening to Dr. Baldwin's, really, I could almost say amen to everything he was saying their needs are, because we are part of the education of this county. We actually are the de facto library for Macon early college and for the community college. They don't have a library, but we are their library. And our uses grow, we have had an increase from you all in four years, this will be the fifth year if we're not successful in getting an increase. But the cost of services is going, health insurance is going. And there may be ways that we can better use our dollars, and we look at that every day, we ask a lot of our people, but we're at a critical point where we actually lost one of our librarians to another county. And we want to keep equality there, because the kids come here. We had someone come up to us just this evening and say that their kids enjoyed the program that they, they came to the library. So, you all have seen our budget requests, and I'm, I'm really just going to say, please look at what we are asking. We aren't asking for a large increase, we're asking to try and improve some of the things that we're doing, and especially those that are so underpaid, because they're, they're dedicated to what they're doing. And we don't have school teachers that are making ten dollars an hour, thank them, but these folks are teaching the kids when they are on our property at the library. And you all have, again, been very generous in many areas, and we have, we have a library system. We though, last thing I will say is that we also are faced with the same challenges that some of the fire departments are facing. We've got the Manahayla Library, it's not cost effective to have that library, but I will tell you that I would like to keep it open, because it's there for the school. And they already feel like they don't get police protection, fire protection and all that. And, and we could do a better job, that, we're in a modular trailer out there, if you haven't been out there, I invite you to come see us sometime out there. That modular trailer is about four years old, leaks, the carpets are ragged, it's, it's in bad shape, but the kids still come to it and use it, and we have computers there to do that. So, technology is going to continue to increase, and that's where our expenses are just rising. E-books, that, that sort of thing are all going up, and without an increase, we aren't quite sure how we're going to maintain the same level of service. We'll still be there, because the level of service may not be there. But I thank you, again, I don't want to delay it, I appreciate Derek is, has done a great job in his research and all, and I understand our, our needs, but he's got a budget, and so, we decided to come to you all and say, let's, let's help us at least help these folks make a little more money.
Just a quick question, I don't disagree with you on the pay scale, but what are the benefits of the library?
We have benefits for our full-time people, no benefits for our part-time.
So these people in that pay scale.
We have full-time, so they're getting full benefits on top of that? They are, yes, yes.
And look, is that a full range, is that?
It, it is high, everything. It is, it is, it is a very good health care kind of thing, and it's partly why we've been able to keep it at any other fifty cent per hour. I mean, because it is, it's about eight thousand dollars a year for each employee. I think the county's paying seven, seven thousand, something like that. Really, you, we're kind of the ugly stepchild, though, because we fall under the fund's hand, or we join the library, and so Jackson County is under that same healthcare as it's laying down. So, we've looked at how, can we decouple that, and can we continue to see if there's ways to reduce that?
I'll suggest a player or the other, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah, and that is, that's a reason we keep something.
What a question. You mentioned Manahayla, the library in Manahayla, is there also, do you know the library in Manahayla School, or is that a free library for Manahayla School?
There is a media center in the school, it closes about three o'clock, and it isn't opening this summer, so.
And in regard to Mitch and Bruce, will you help him, that's what I'm getting at?
Can you?
We have that situation, a lot of, we have.
We have been submitting work.
You mentioned Manahayla, always feeling like they're getting the short stick, and they did, I mean, last year I think we appropriated two forty thousand dollar office for our community centers in Franklin area for upgrades, think realistically, but Manahayla doesn't ask their kind of improvements to Jack and Warren, I've been in on the lake over there, the buoys and stuff, the beach there behind Lake In, but some point we'll have to look at this, I mean, it's not that we need to do something for Manahayla, but they do get ignored.
They do.
We've not invested anything, community center, in any central location, that may be something we need to discuss, is how do we do that? How do we, you know, some of their tax dollars back in the form of advanced services? So, it's a good point.
It looks so, it looks a little bit better now, we've, we've done some nice work on that. But it does look.
Which part of this, this investor's board, increase in personnel pay?
On the hooks.
Of nine hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars budget, what percentage of that budget has been done for personnel pay?
The personnel pay is, the percentage is.
Seventy-three.
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 Seventy-three percent of the child, that's what it's very good.
That's correct.
No, no, no.
Seventy.
Eighty percent is probably what it is, that's the child.
And that's not wrong.
But you know, the best in the library is, well, we're going to do, last, most much on the time, on the eight percent, not for the, not for the.
Eight percent of the.
Eighty-nine, that's right.
And we gave them a raise two years ago, one year, like you.
We didn't get an increase from the county, but we were able to give some additional money to, to staff, funding other costs. As Lenny mentioned, though, this will be the fifth year of the money increase, or we're currently increasing, there was money for technology, that was a lot.
And the technology continues to. And the technology continues to. And I'm going to ask Karen to give me those numbers.
We've got twenty-two full-time equivalents. Twenty-two full-time equivalents.
He was asking how many full-time and part-time. I think.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Fourteen. Fifteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen.
Average value. We have twenty-one thirty employees that make less than twelve hours.
Two to thirteen.
Twenty-one of twenty-nine employees that make less than twelve hours.
Most of those are part-time.
There are some full-timers that are in the ten, ten-fifteen, eleven.
Now there's six, now there's ten, now there's thirteen, now there's fifteen, now there's eleven.
Less than.
Less than, less than twelve hours.
Yeah, we've got.
Less than twelve.
Less than twelve.
Ten.
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 Ten, 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 that's all we're selling.
Ten and a fifth, ten, ten, ten. No.
Ten.
Well, ten and a fifth, ten, 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 ten. Well, ten and a fifth, ten, 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 ten.
It adds overall, the ten overall. The library's a full-time and part-time. If we don't actually vary salaries based on full-time, part-time, it's for the position that they hold. Doesn't really matter if they're part-time or full-time, that position has a salary. And so it doesn't matter if they're part-time or full-time, their salaries are the same. In terms of benefits, we offer full health insurance benefits. It includes vision dental and major medical, beginning at thirty hours. Between twenty and thirty hours, they have to be enrolled in the retirement system to close retirement system. So that's a benefit that we have to match the retirement. And of course, the retirement rate will go up this year. We also offer pay leave if they're working twenty hours or more. So there are kind of scalable benefits package, but the full benefit package only comes at thirty hours or more. You generally don't have many people who work less than forty. You want to get the bang for the buck. You don't go for the full benefit if you want to work.
So it's about eight, eight and fifteen, less.
There's a package we found in the library.
Correct. Correct.
And that is one of the general tours for the small employee or under fifty. And in over fifty, you have to provide them. It's under fifty, you wouldn't, on the other hand, at least ten, we wouldn't have a salary.
But if you're making twelve hours matter, the full benefit is eighty, right, in the real world. That's what I have, I think, nothing. The full benefit is to make eighteen million matter, it's not changing what you do. To make an eighteen million matter, not in all the costs.
So we know that there are several employees who are eligible for the insurance to be on, opt-in to take it, which saves us some good money. They're either ex-military or they have spouses who provide it for them. So unfortunately, they have to save some money on insurance for eligible positions that we don't actually provide insurance for.
Does the library have a fund balance?
Fontana Region Library does have a fund balance that we use for matching grants, for instance, things like flying our space cream, then we have a portable planetarium that requires a twenty-five percent match. So a fund balance is used for those kinds of things.
Yeah, let's see, is it?
Mr. Baldwin, I was in Nantahala for the math and of course he came up to talk to me a little. I don't know if the library, you know, we've got, and what you're saying, it has leaks, both of them, I mean, but. Why is it not being a team to, just to be the job we're doing?
We submit work order requests as is the evidence for teachers.
Are you expecting here a week's? To be inside of your, to their.
And again, I think, you know, in Nantahala, unfortunately, even when it comes to maintenance, I don't know.
Somebody else.
It takes five years to fix a leak on the island school, so I'm not going to get the bird.
The building is, you know, it's an aging modular building. It's almost five years old. It's got some leaks and it's got some separation between the wall and the floor.
When you're passing almost a property to build, I believe, it's almost, almost, and that went away in.
Someday.
And someday it would have property, that's the problem. I think there's still aspirations to build the library.
There is.
We'd design somewhere a footwell, if you could give water and fuel tanks and state and get a second service. We had a great place, we did that.
All the more reason to maintain what we want. Absolutely.
I agree. I think this person, you know, the building is six months.
A what?
A building? Not building, we did more.
Well, you know, anytime you've got leaks, you've got some room to, that potential growing in the ceiling tiles, you know, kinds of things. But to my knowledge, there's not a large problem.
They're building a little kind, are you available?
Yeah. If you go, if you're at Nantahala, there are two modular buildings there. They were both installed by Macon Program for Progress and they were used for head start and early head start. One is now vacant and has received many of their maintenance and that's, we're hopeful that the building that we occupy doesn't deteriorate through operations.
Who were they, who acknowledged Teresa Ryan, worked at Hospital full times, had cancer and did her, but they were here, named her. Very fortunate.
We're good too, so for almost twenty-five years.
Always replaced.
Yes. We do have two employees out there now, both part-time. So indeed, that was an opportunity for us to save money by not having that position full-time and creating two part-time and thus we're able to save a little bit of money on benefits. So we try to do that, you know, to re-evaluate whenever we have staffing changes to try to minimize our costs. Those are things that we've done that have allowed us to maintain a level of service over the last five years without having an increase and still deliver that service. I do think so.
Well, last year you closed a lot very early during the month of January.
We shortened our hours to closing at seven o'clock instead of eight o'clock at the main library and those were the hours that we put down.
How long is that? How long?
Oh, we're still, we're still operating.
The same month?
Yes.
And how much did you save, thirteen thousand something dollars?
Yeah, what we did, you know, we supplement some of our part-time positions with extra hours so that when people are on vacation, when they're sick or they're out doing other programs in the community, we still have adequate coverage.
Continue, continue, just cut that our back off this summer.
Yes. Yeah, we don't have any plans at the current time to add hours.
You don't add hours, I'm going to go back to where you would.
Right.
How many hours does the library have?
Which library?
Main library.
We are open fifty-six hours a week.
Fifty-six?
Fifty-six hours a week. But in addition, we're open at Hudson Library for us. We're open thirty hours a week at the Macon Library and we're open forty, about forty hours a week. No, we have no regular operating hours on Sunday. Would you do special programs sometimes on Sunday?
So that's a hundred and twenty-six hours a week.
Actually, a hundred and twenty-two, I'm sorry. I was a little high on the points. So the main library's open fifty-six hours a week, Hudson Library's open thirty-six hours a week, Nantahala's open thirty for a total of a hundred and twenty-two.
Forty-two hours a week. How many, how many did you play for on the library?
Well, at Nantahala, we often operate with one person, which is the safest way to operate, but that's how.
What do you recommend?
At Macon, we can operate and sometimes do with three if we are, those are kind of margin hours, so from nine to ten. With Highlands, we never have less than two offered at present. Remember too, that we go out into the community to perform a service within the community in addition to the hours that we staff operate on physical points.
So that's, a hundred, we got a hundred and twenty-two total open hours and it's six people, so seven hundred and twenty-two hours a week. And at twenty-nine people, we got eleven, eleven, sixteen hours, five hours, seven, everybody works every week.
Everybody works every week with stagger hours. During peak hours, we have usually more like ten people in the main library, ten to fifteen. It just depends what's going on. I would invite you to come by the library during the summer while we're experiencing our heaviest level of activity and you can see that we can possibly operate with three people at that time. So it really depends on, we operate under, studying our door counts to see what the traffic level is, what other programs and events that we have going on. So the hours that we staff always would have three people at the main library, but mostly have more than that. So it just depends what we're doing, what service that we're trying to offer. And again, I can only emphasize that it is not just within the library building that we offer service.
Yes. We'll call it outreach.
Yes.
What does that call it?
You know, we're doing some more data analysis to analyze just that question. We've really increased how much we're going out into the community and so we're trying to have a better handle on cost of all the money.
You did have that, this program. Oh, it's dark. The library, it did have the outreach, start the outreach.
Well, we've always done some outreach. We have the reading over bookmobile that serves childcare centers. Historically, we've done some book deliveries and bookmobile service. So we're always reshaping what we're doing to be relevant to the community and if we see the need is in the community rather than at the library, that's all about.
Excuse me, are your overheads for schools?
We supplement and enhance, I'd say, what they do and what they can offer. So they don't have a portable planetarium. We do, we go to the school to provide that program in conjunction with what they're teaching and the STEM-related activities that they're offering and enhance what their students can experience.
Summer reading.
Summer reading when school is in session. And so we go to the school to promote that so that people are aware of what's going on.
Does the school do a community program?
I know that they have some summer reading for, particularly for students who perhaps need to improve their skills. But I, I know they changed that for this year, so I'm not really sure what they have. They just have the summer baby games during the summer, sometimes at the schools or the summer feeding, hunger programs and reading.
And your salary comes completely out of funding in Macon Library, your funding comes through the whole degree.
My funding is, I, somebody may know that I'm the Fontana Regional Library Director as well as Macon County Library and half my salary is paid by Macon County and half by the state.
What is the salary?
My salary currently is, uh, seventy-eight thousand.
Oh.
Okay.
Plus two.
Yeah.
So are you a spy or something?
No, I'm a Fontana Regional Library. We're a local government. We receive state funds as a qualified regional library system. For the state of North Carolina, you have to qualify to receive state aid and Fontana Regional Library is qualified to receive state aid.
Does Gary White's doing it?
It does, yes. Everything's split, for me, it's split.
Right.
You mentioned traffic, yeah, how do you, how do you do your traffic?
We have a door counter that counts people, well, at the Hudson Library, Highlands and the Macon Library, here, main library, we have a traffic counter. So it's a laser counter that breaks a beat and that's how we count. So it's, I wouldn't want to dip on my part.
Plus American.
Yeah. At Nantahala, we simply do a visual counter.
And then you, the bookmobile, was that a regional or local?
It's a regional activity. So we receive funding from Region A Partnership for Children, the Smart Start, to fund services to childcare centers. So our service is targeted at preschool children and their children. So half of that service is funded through Region A and the rest is funded either through county funds, funds from our friends at the library, grants, begging.
I've been around a long time.
Yeah. It's a good, it's a wonderful service and that's an excellent example of when childcare centers often, transportation is very difficult or almost impossible to bus children to the library. So that's a situation, if we see a need, we go to the childcare centers to deliver the service there because their transportation methods to get children to the library, it's just not feasible. So outreach through our services is the way that we can bring services to those children and their children.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thanks to the rest of our board as well. Kathy, we had to.
I'm used to this.
In case.
Practically so. Thank you. Glad to throw that.
I'm a laughingstock.
Thank you.
All right. Next out is the Health Department. Jim, we're traveling today. This is all of the Department of Health. The Board of Health voted unanimously on last month, this meeting was their right, for this board to consider the addition, an additional maintenance worker. Maintenance worker's primary responsibility would be for air company, air conditioning needs to be built. I think it's cleaning the, the admission, cleaning the exam rooms, clinical areas. It's evidently, there's a plane made, it's this lot where you're walking forward, walking the counter, taking trash out. I think there's more experienced than I, I don't want somebody specialized coming in there. We talked about subs, subcontractors, firms might do that specifically. And there, we talked about subs, uh, subcontractors, firms might do that specifically, maybe connect the, the, the. But that person will do these requirements. I ask that, and I think the existing, uh, air company, I think the existing folks are doing our, you know, maintenance staff, not the people that are actually.
Health department, that's right.
Yeah, there's ten. My understanding is that, uh, number one is, I think that person potentially revolves. Does that? Like, oh, yeah, there's, um, you know, two, we have two full-time custodial workers that, um, help. He's helping himself to do it. Two, are they assigned there full-time? Yes. I think the director is, I think, uh, I think that's a fair looking person to help do this, clean facilities. We actually reviewed that in our budget, um, discussion, you know, we had spoken about, um, this cleaning process as well. And this is again, that's not my meeting with the Health Force, my meeting with the Department of Health. Throughout the budget discussions, we went back through the job descriptions and actually at the animal shelters, in the job description, the animal shelter attendant as well as the animal control officer, um, to clean the facility. Kind of upkeep of the animal shelter facility. So that's why I was kind of curious to see that. Again, the paper, these are all things, um, you and myself just spoke about during the budget discussions.
Hope it's a good venue for the remaining board members to try to ever even fake the press between the guys on there. But Ryan did a good job. About how we find out. Yes.
I didn't, I didn't know.
Maybe that's my fault.
No, that's. If you were a budget process.
So, um, making a case for it? No, they made it three, the last four health things, um, there before. They had this, Eric, I'm thinking you're gonna come wrong, they had this in their initial budget. And after meeting with Jim, these items were not in the budget. But it was a prioritization thing. They, they also requested a, uh, a processing system to help with, uh, needing to grow in human resources needs that comes to the Health Department being under the Office of State Personnel. Um, and if we were going to our budget discussions, and the board jumped in and from missing something, I mean, that to me, um, was related priority over the, the cleaning.
Was that question was asked, was your priority?
So that was the, yeah, that we asked that question in terms of what was the top priority and got a different answer than, than we.
And the board of health came back with sanitation. Right, I'll be asking you, I sat through that meeting just like you did. He took no, slept.
That's right, he took that.
He wasted their time learning school.
Letting frames and assistants go. And.
Assistance.
Do you think that's, uh, you know, it's been a long time, and it, the history's been a long time. If you clean, there's never a problem. If you clean, there were, no one's gonna retire, even if you're your junior, yeah, right. Doors are up for years and years, there's never been a problem. I don't know if the demand is that high, I would, you know, going after doors. They think we insist on it for three years. If there's some kind of, you know, more basic disease, you gotta, you know, probably work days, whatever you have to clean. But that's, I don't, by the time I'm old enough, that's what I would.
And I can't give the history on it. Well, I think that's always very important. We got into a very long, pointed discussion, and they, uh, I'm glad the Health Board even exists. Why are they, other than being homes or they're important to some stuff.
Who uses a trailer?
Who dropped Teller?
You have the most special claim to judge?
Yeah, detention officers. Unfortunately. They do a great job, I might add.
You've got to work thoroughly. I'm held world. We're taking that every time about this, Mr. Chairman.
Nurses, yeah, nurses, cleaning the lab room, something like that, I don't know. I'm not sure that's a good use of their time. If nurses are having to do this, um, I mean, it's more requiring to study with them, when they, when they go nurse them. You could call alone. You can't do work under occupation.
I'm telling you.
What was it going along with, if a person was hurt down? That's reiterating.
Their original, I, I thought, they, they, um, they originally wanted to use contracted services. In their original request, uh, it was like thirty-seven. They wanted to use contracted services. They weren't looking for a county employee who'd be such a good application.
And it, uh, changed for some reason, uh, in a while. And it's, um, if I could just interject, and I want to say first and foremost, that, um, I think that our, our custodial folks do a great job. They do, uh, you know, we have top-notch, um, very clean facilities. I mean, like Ronnie got here working tonight and, um, keep this facility clean, so, you know. I, I think they do a great job and I don't want it to, to appear, um, like that, that that's what, um, you know. So I thank them first and foremost. And secondly, I think we're kind of, when you get into a situation where we have a maintenance department, such as we do, that maintains our community buildings and upkeeps them. And then, you know, you go in to, um, the Health Department and let them contract out with, um, someone to do cleaning or, or janitorial services, then, I, I mean, I feel like from a management standpoint, and looking at the organization as a whole, um, now Sheriff, you know, his detention officers, he's running more inmates now than he's ever ran, ever thought we've run. And, and so who's to then say that the sheriff comes and we, we subcontract now again? Now we have operational expenses, um, that we're putting to, towards our maintenance staff, um, as well as spending additional operating expenses on contracting now. And I, I think that kind of, um, you know, it kind of goes to take away from the purpose of having that, instead of the staff. So I think that's why I moved away from the contracting thing to the, um, to that specific, uh, or from the contracting to us to the county employee. But I think so.
I'm sorry, you were talking about, nurses handling tasks, you should follow up. It's false on us, aren't we?
Alright, any other things? I mean, on budget discussions, please. Usually, um, now, just before we have the budget hearing on June thirteenth, um, you know, which is scheduled for, this is kind of the work session. Where we look at some, some things. And for June thirteenth coming up on Tuesday, you know, we've heard some requests tonight. And historically, the board has kind of given, uh, more, you know, self and staff, um, some guidance, kind of on where, where to head with the needed, um, budget revisions. So we could, uh, like, discuss those, if, if that's the equation going, uh, kind of get whatever we can ironed out, best of good.
I quit being late there, bro.
Four, six o'clock on the.
Eleven to the point, I'll do that. I need to digest something.
We can always.
Or, I mean, we can race this third thing until the twentieth, or actually, um, the.
Yeah, we can always move the, we can always move that to, to hearings.
Even at the thirteenth, we can discuss it.
You can have a long agenda.
We can discuss it and make changes on the thirteenth.
Yeah, up until.
Up until the time of adoption, so.
Yeah, just that.
Do you know, do you have a long agenda on the thirteenth, uh, to give this discussion, it could end up in a long.
Yeah, that's true.
Long discussion, you have a long agenda.
Are they all for?
You got a long, long way to go.
This help has quite a few things.
But they're easy.
On teams.
Yes. They're simple.
Well, that's so, that's how it's I'd be, uh, if you were to hear. Do we need another?
I don't think we have any forces, I think we're doing this last. I think, now it's about five departments, I'm sure, um, Mr. Bill Stone, that's our, our very own.
Today is?
Eighteen.
So that would be Monday at twelve. Not he's on for, um, just his. Yeah, this, yeah, this year. I will, I tell the board, it's a hundred, when you look at that, I will be sending out a resolution, uh, at highest last night in Grand County, Platte County, um, about, we hope we'll know something more from the United States group. About tonight, not even one until tomorrow. He'll help, uh, so they will, if they're talking, they're gonna now, and I think that a resolution, maybe it will be before two. If the last report review costs higher than what you're paying. I'm scheduling, uh, reviewing all these incentives and, uh.
So the thirteenth, one, there's scheduled budget period.
Yeah, it's still.
It still wasn't.
Yeah, that's not going to change.
It would just be a workshop to, to, uh, try to do what would be presented yet. Fire the thirteenth. So that leaves us.
Okay.
More night or?
The only thing Monday is that broadband schedule, that's the library. Three thirty, so that leaves, you'll do it five and two.
Six, I think. Six Monday?
Broadband says four.
So you've got to pause some time there, it's scheduled.
And this is it.
Think I'll pause Monday? Get it back, Paul?
Yes.
That'd be a great job.
What, what are we thinking about? I've heard this twenty-one percent, and crakes and twenty percent. Is there something? Do I have enough information here to, without budget, for somebody to come deal with certain pieces of information, or about this?
I've heard you give the, I've heard you do this.
Call there when you have lunch and some, some questions.
No, is it the fire department or is that the health department?
Fire department.
Or the.
Not at all. It's good, so my day at six P M. Alright. Richard, sorry, thanks for your patience and delay.
I think if, um, a memo from me dated a few weeks back or a week back. Um, this is my fourth year, so by jump statute, the board has to appoint a faculty minister, faculty supervisor, whatever it's called in the county. At this time, so my appointment finishes July one and usually we take care of it in March, but, you know, we expect it in March, and that's what I'm here to know. Um, I trust that you read some brief things that our office has accomplished. Um, one thing, I don't know if it's in there, but we jumped from forty-eighth to thirty-eighth in our collection rate this year. Didn't need license audit here. And right now, we're ahead of last year, so we soon will increase that up to higher than the state. And I talked to David Baker, Ronnie knows, and I think so many do, he runs the Department of Revenue. And he's going to work to the County Miss Association. And he said that basically the ones above us, you don't have a, a counting a ninety-nine plus collection rate because it's obviously impossible to do it unless you, what you count and don't count. So I'm saying that to say that our staff downstairs has really, um, gone after, um, some of these delinquencies in the last couple of years. And we are going to reemphasize that in our billing this coming year. Because we would hope that everyone would pay and have a hundred percent collection rate, but that's not the case. And some of the funding problems you have are only going to get more intense if we don't get the collection rate up. Because when they ask for a thousand, well, you can put it in the budget, but we got to make certain that thousand gets collected. And, um, like I said, the girls downstairs are for dealing, she's leaving on that. The next thing is reassessment, and that comes up in nineteen. So we are in the process of working on that condition, the most critical, the year between now and October, or twenty-eighteenth, we do, do some of the work. And then we can notice that we can. And right on the tail of that, in that memo, you'll see that we are going to be forced to finally evaluate and upgrade our software that runs the tax offices to forty years old. Our vendor is, uh, didn't pass retirement age, so basically we're gonna, how we're gonna service it and keep it going. And that's gonna be, you know, I hate to talk about funding at this level, but it will be a million and a half dollar project. And that's upon any way to do it. So there's a lot of big things coming up. This is my thirty-second year and, you know, I think we're still not retiring age, so it's a pleasure for the board. I want to still be here.
Alright.
I'm certainly glad to make the work, you, uh, after.
Any further discussion? Paul O'Favor?
I'll probably do my best for her, thank you.
Thank you. Have you got more, have you got more onery in that thirty-two years?
Yes.
I'll ask a little dealer about that.
Richard, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Alright. Three budget amendments?
Yeah, but these are just for the Health Department. Um, these are grant funds, they're state health fund, but they may, so.
You have a small one, no? Got a motion?
Motion, they do.
You got a second, Paul O'Favor? North Carolina Weatherization Systems Program, then, no one?
This is for our Housing Department. Um, at the beginning of the year, we received one hundred and seventy-one thousand property. Um, but due to delays after the Department of Urbanization, et cetera. Unfortunately, we're gonna have to pay off the base of taxes this year. It is just a means that, uh, in our contract, number one oh five six eight. Is there any motion?
Make a motion on the contract.
Second.
Second, Paul O'Favor? Alright, if y'all have, before we recess, I guess, y'all have, just be thinking about any other questions, y'all. All right, y'all have, before we recess, I guess, y'all have, just be thinking about any other question you might have, if you want to discuss on Monday. Seems like we're down to education, the two fire departments are completely separate, but for our values, education, the health department, library, are there any other questions? Any other things that need to be considered, if I have anything else? We'll clean up, so we can talk about it. I don't want to get to our meeting on the thirteenth and be ready to, like, know all heads. Mike, second, I think, that's on his items, so he's not sure, he has broadband.
Explain about this, what you'd like, what you'd like to see, I don't know.
I'd like to see that funding in there, where, I'm certainly not able to advocate for this, and authority, but I do think that we, we do have a consultant, that could, that's organized, who's effort. I would also like to see funds that are worth to do some power projects throughout the year, not in a specific year, so that this will be a base for, for the potential of what we would be doing here, but.
I think, my recollection is fifty thousand, is that, is that correct? All right, is there any other topics that you're concerned? S C J, earlier in time, you have, I still got that.
I don't understand that one, Bonnie Burnmill. We don't, always mention burn building, if you want to bring that in this budget, and. I just understand that the Dr. Thomas, is he talking about short following this fiscal year?
I've not seen any information.
Two thousand dollars for this fiscal year, or?
Yeah, at the end of the year, they're saying, they're like three thousand.
I have seen information of.
Now, how many people are budget?
Two hundred and eighty.
Got two hundred and eighty thousands. Uh, making county portion. And they have a little steering room, but in ten years, in the American?
No.
I, whatever, I, two pound dollar. Very good.
But I think there's conversation with the question, or some talks, Derek, to have this information, just about this place.
Back to the burn building. Mr. Truman told. Since when, where are we at on the burn building, the last time we met, from my recollection, we asked that if there's any changes to be made, or any increases to be made, in the cost of that building, in the cost of that relocation building.
Put it on hold.
And this, it's not going to happen, so. Back to where we're at, we know what monies they have.
Drive one of them to the social path, because, what, one thing is, I think that, is what, I'm sorry, that's one of the concerns, and you, the very, but, but, if they had, I would say, the interest in helping construction, that we're trying to experience, and, and, we're concerned about, I don't know, because those murders, and the country, that's needed to be out, and where we're at today, um, is, is how strong, you know, doing that, doing that.
Do we know any of that? Well, it's kind of been, it's kind of been in the back of my, like, the seat, you know, you, you know, and I would know that that's down, I think, that you would make sure files, and, and that, and that's, and, and get, and, 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 and. Is that something, Mr. Ford, you usually outside the budget, and takes, puts you out of, from balance? You think outside the budget, is the one time it's been to you?
It'll be.
Is that what we're looking at?
Would that be more of our C I P plan?
That'd be, that'd be cheaper down the road.
That's a problem.
The money will be available, that software that I have, wants to C I P, is, is, done, I'm saying that it's, for them being, but, the problem is, is cost of construction, it's really good, so facility is shrinking over there.
That's good, it's like lumber, but the cost of it, lumber is a big thing.
But, not basically, in basically?
Basically, concrete, the basements are, the left, there's everything.
What did they say, six, seven percent, is what they, they were referring to?
It's got this engineering. Ever since candidate holds the embargo, you know, it's just, it's, it's, you can't get, you can't hang out there like we all have, it's just, you can't get that.
I wouldn't, you've got the ball time, and, 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 now that we know what we're doing, this, as long as we want to, that would be correct. A motion to recess until June twelve, at six P M, right here in Bible Street, and Mission Department.
I invite everybody that's available.
Second, all favor?
Aye. If you're available, to come to Elder Abuse Law, Monday evening.
Okay, thanks for watching, I'll have the edited version up sometime tomorrow, the day after.